City of Inkster Plan Commission. Now we already called as me in order, roll call please. President.
President.
Secretary Rebecca Daniels, present. Mayor Patrick Wondrum.
Here.
Commissioner Darryl Davis, excuse absence. Commissioner Matt Willis. Commissioner Tanya Williams, she did email. By sharing I said she had an emergency, so. Commissioner. Savannah Hall.
President.
Commissioner Cheryl Hayes Bradford.
President.
You do have a corner, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before we jump into adoption of the agenda, I'd like to formally welcome Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Cheryl Hayes Bradford to the Plan Commission. Thank you both for being here in your first meeting. We hope you enjoy and we'll be ready to enjoy many more. Anything you'd like to say in this particular? Ready?
Yeah.
All right, we're down to the adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda? Floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
The property move and second. Is there support? I'm sorry, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item three A, adoption of minutes. Adoption of July twenty fifth, twenty twenty two meeting minutes. Floor is open for a motion to adopt the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty two meeting minutes.
Some move.
Support.
Property move then, there's a second. Is there any corrections in any second? Any correction need be made to the minutes? I should say discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Adoption of September twelfth, twenty twenty two special meeting minutes. Floor is open for a motion to adopt those minutes.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Support, second, I'm sorry.
It's been moved then, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number four, first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing. This is an opportunity for members in the audience or general public to speak on agenda items that are not listed under public hearing. So tonight that would be three different items under new business. And at this time, if there's anyone from the general public who wishes to speak to those items, please approach podium and state your name for the record. Hearing none and seeing no movement, we move right on down to public hearings. Floor is open for a motion to open the public hearings. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
The property move and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls? Public hearing is now open. Item A, case number twenty-two dash twenty-three, RZ, rezoning of parcel four-four-zero-zero-eight-zero-two-zero-zero-two-seven-zero-zero-two. Which is formerly. Address is two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds from B-three, general business to M-one light industrial. Review and consideration of recommendation of approval of a rezoning request for the parcel I previously stated. From B-three, general business to M-one, light industrial at two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds Avenue, NSH Holdings is the applicant. Mara, you have a floor.
Thank you, Chair. Good to see everyone out here. I'd love to welcome you, Commissioner Hayes Bradford and Commissioner Hall. Things were supporting us today and the item on the agenda, so first of all, I'm going to say that this is a clerical error for this result. And so, Planning Commission is aware, as in March twenty twenty-two, months ago. We, Planning Commission and City Council approved the rezoning of an adjacent parcel to the M-one district. When I said this is a clerical error, this parcel was also supposed to be part of that project scope. And unfortunately, a technicality happened and it was not part of that scope. So I will refresh the Planning Commissioners' memory and also let the new commissioners know that the City of Inkster planning department received an application for rezoning in December twenty twenty-one. The applicant requested a rezoning for two-eight-four-four-zero Reynolds Avenue. And they should have also, or is doing now, requested to also rezone two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds. These are two parcels right next to each other. There's actually one shelter that overlaps the two parcels. So the two parcels have to act in tandem and they have to be zoned the same. So this is a clerical error. And the planning department saw this application to rezonate from the general business district. And would like both parcels to be rezoned to the light industrial district with purposes of constructing a marijuana grow facility and the armored vehicle facility. Let's keep going to City, then the Commission saw this request in February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, where we held a public hearing for two-eight-four-four-zero Reynolds. Now we're hosting one for two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds. Again, they both have to be done the same because they share, one shelter shares the same property on both parcels. The Commission voted to recommend approval for the proposed zoning. And then with unanimous vote, and on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, City Council approved that two-eight-four-four-zero Reynolds be rezoned to the light industrial district, and that's what the applicant secured it.
Thank you, Mara. Commissioners, do you have anything further to ask at this time? If not, this is a public hearing. This is open for the public to speak to the matters that are on the floor at this time regarding two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds. If there's anyone from the general public who wishes to speak, please approach the podium at this time and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Judith Hmadi, and I'm here on behalf of NSH Holdings. I just wanted to provide an opportunity for anyone to ask any questions and then be here, just in case anybody does have any questions about the matter, we would be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant about this additional rezoning? It looked like you'd get off easy. No questions at this time. This is, of course, for the general public. If you have any questions for the applicant, please feel free to approach at this time. All righty. Thank you. All right, well, if all minds are satisfied, I guess the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing for case number twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
I second.
The property move and second. Is there any further discussion? There's been no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Floor is open for a motion to open a public hearing for item B.
I like to make a motion.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Mayor.
I did not hear the motion to approve or deny the request.
I'm sorry, I did state that wrong. That is my error.
Okay.
Let's rewind. Let's put it this way. The floor is open for a motion to approve the rezoning of parcel at two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds, case number twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Some move. I thought what was we doing it, so I was just trying to make it exactly the same way.
Okay, so.
I moved it.
And second, discussion.
I thought the approval would happen in the new business. But.
Chair, give me.
Go ahead.
Okay, I actually asked Coco, our parliamentarian, what's the best protocol to host a public hearing and then make a motion based on that public hearing? And Coco recommended and guided us to make a motion immediately after public hearing, whatever we're discussing. So that's why the agenda is written in a new way.
Ah. Okay.
Good.
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion passes. And. We're good on that one, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just lost myself, that's all. All right, the floor is open. So item B, case number twenty-two dash twenty-five, special land use marijuana growing cultivation facility at two-eight-four-four-zero dash two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing on that item.
Some move.
Second.
So property move then, second, it is. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Review and consideration of recommendation of approval of a special land use request for a marijuana grow and cultivation facility in the proposed rezoned M-one light industrial district at two-eight-four-four-zero dash two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds Avenue. NSH Holdings is the applicant.
Mr. Chair, did we need to have public discussion for every individual case then?
Yes. Um. One was a discussion, I'm sorry, one was a public here for a rezoning.
Mm-hmm.
And then this one is the, going to be the approval for the special land use, I'm sorry, recommendation for special land use of City Council. And so that goes under public hearing too.
Yeah, this isn't the way, it's just a different protocol than what we normally would do. So that's why I think we're.
Well, we never really been voting to rezon, then had to vote on.
Right.
Let's just tone this off a little bit.
Yeah.
Because I looked and then I thought the third one was, but the third was different. It's not.
Yeah, it's so. Think we just need to allow for public comment before we vote, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, um.
We're on B.
Right, where we at? We had opened a public hearing for that, right? And I just read it, oh yeah, I was going to return it over tomorrow. All right, Mara, you have the floor.
Okay, so you reviewed the application for special land use and preliminary site plan consideration for two-eight-four-four-zero, two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds Avenue. And the applicant proposes to reuse both existing buildings for the recreational marijuana grow facility. Additionally, the applicant seeks to reoccupy the existing metal structure on two-eight-four-four-zero Reynolds for an armored vehicle terminal facility. The project no longer has two zoning designations, well, right now has two zoning designations, so we'll have to wait for City Council to change that. But, Commission upon City Council reviewing the request of rezoning this, staff ultimately recommends approval of the special land use request for a marijuana grow facility. I'll continue to go in a little more detail. And the applicant seeks to rezon, we talked about that, as a marijuana use, you're all familiar with this, as a marijuana use, the applicant seeks a special land use permit on both parcels for the recreation marijuana facilities. The site is located at intersection of Reynolds and Harrison Street, just west of the Town Center District. The site is south of Michigan Avenue, does not directly above Michigan Avenue, and is solely accessible off of Reynolds Avenue. Site is bounded on the south by railroad tracks, the east by Reynolds Avenue, the north by Evergreen Hotel and a vacant structure, and to the east an automotive salvage yard. This review is based on the site plan for August eighth, twenty twenty-two, but we'll talk about site plans later. And pending any comments from the public during the public hearing and any conditional of approval upon two-eight-five-five-zero Reynolds being rezoned, we recommend Planning Commission consider the following motion. We recommend approval of the proposed special land use for a recreational marijuana grow facility at the two addresses. And we also listed a recommendation to replace the chain link fence along Harrison Street. And I feel, I think the applicant has something for, to provide for us with that today. And then we have another list of our basic requirements that we require all of site plans or all special land use requests to do, including rezoning, including combining the lot into one parcel.
Whoever makes that motion will have a mouthful.
Yes, or you could say asking in the.
Thank you, Mara. This is a public hearing and it is open. So anyone from the general public who wish to speak to this particular matter, please approach the podium at this time, state your name for the record.
It's us again. We just wanted to also be able to give you all an opportunity to ask any questions. We know that the setup of this is a little bit confusing and so we want to apologize for that. And then also kindly request that you, you know, review thoroughly and then approve us if everything seems to be in accordance to what your expectations are. And then we also did want to thank you all for joining us today and for giving us the opportunity to, for this consideration, for this approval.
Absolutely. Can you go ahead, I guess, and expand upon or elaborate upon the chain link fence that was brought up our city planner?
So our. The site plan, review, the site plan review is right, is under new business, but he can speak to that now.
Can I ask you, so you guys can take a look at it? These are the updated plan. I have a copy first.
That's my fault, thank you.
All the recommendations by the city planner were updated on this plan.
Sir.
Sir.
So everything, all the, all the updates are in the files, you can see it. One of it is the fence, security camera, trees on the east side of the property. So all the recommended changes have been updated.
Okay. And I also did want to pass out the social equity plan. This was not required out of the special land use request, but we provided it just because we thought it might be helpful. We usually include it with the marijuana facility for my applications. So we thought it'd be nice if you guys just had a copy. I mean, you guys may, you guys know, you guys obviously does a lot of work with, or does a lot of volunteer work with the city. But we want to be able to continue doing that volunteer work for the city. And some of the initiatives that we have planned are in social equity plan, but we would love suggestions and recommendations as to what initiatives you guys think you need best for the city and be more than happy to participate. Because the state of Michigan does have a social equity program in place that requires anybody who is doing it. Oh, yes, of course. Apologies. So the state of Michigan does require that anybody who is going to have any adult use facility, whether it be a cultivation facility or a retailer that they engage in social equity. And our focus, since the city of, since we're requesting this of the city of Inkster, our focus in our social equity initiatives will be within the city of Inkster. And so we definitely want to, we've already begun doing a lot of work with the city of Inkster. And Amin has done a lot of work with the city of Inkster in the past, volunteer work, and he wants to continue to do that. But if he, if you guys have any suggestions as well, we would be more than happy to listen to them and to implement them in addition to the work that we're already doing.
I did see a hand for the general public go up, so if you could please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you may address the applicant at this time. Yes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharon Kato, live in the city of Inkster. I'm wondering when this facility opens, will they be hiring locally in the city of Inkster for people to work at this facility?
All right, I'll allow them to address that.
So if you got another copy of the social equity plan, give that to her. Here, you can give her mine.
Everybody's so grateful to you.
No, I shouldn't, I should have gotten a handful next time, I don't know, I'll get a stack.
And just expand on social equity, just for the general public. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Yes, of course. And that's actually an excellent question. Thank you so much for asking that. We do have that incorporated in our social equity plan. Our priority will be to hire residents of the city of Inkster before anybody else. And we're going to go out of our way to make sure that we're advertising these positions of employment within, within community centers, centers in the city of Inkster. And we're going to be going out of our way to target residents of the city of Inkster for these employment opportunities. And then we have that in the social equity plan as well.
All right, thank you.
Of course.
Question, how many positions are there available?
So in the beginning, we are thinking it'll probably be around seven. As time goes on, it'll increase depending on, depending on how we scale, depending on how work is going. So there'll be about seven for the, anywhere from I'd say four to seven for the, for the cultivation. And then for the, for the terminal facility, for the armored cars, anywhere from three to five.
Mr. Chair. And, and, and is this totally Inkster, or are you looking at like a certain percentage of?
Totally Inkster. Other than the, the people that own the, the company, we're looking at hiring those within the city of Inkster.
Sir.
He's being silly, please.
I wanted to hear it though.
We've had, we've had some already employees on the city.
Okay.
Yeah, and he's been employing Inkster residents.
Okay, thank you.
And you're going to employ Inkster residents there too.
Mr. Chair, the young lady wanted to approach again.
Oh, right here.
I didn't, I'm forgetting this, I think this is my answer, but I was wondering about the charity charitable donations. Are you planning on doing anything with the charitable organizations in Inkster, like Hope for Kids and things like that? Again?
Excuse me, the charitable donations, I see that on here. I saw a few that was named, like Hope for Kids and other, other charities. Organizations in Inkster. Okay, thank you so much.
And I'd like a list of any Inkster specific nonprofits who already work for people we want. If there is a list somewhere that you guys already have compiled that.
And Mr. Chair, just for the record, through Uncle Ken's Tires, I believe is the name. I don't know why I want to always call him Uncle Sam's, I think just because it's just your dad's name. It's Uncle Sam's, okay. I, I hit him up all the time for, for donations for Coach for Kids and for our Thanksgiving's Drive. That's why the stuff is, is here. As examples of, they've already been donating to the community, so.
Beautiful.
Without a problem, there's, there's, they're the ones that you can actually send people to without a problem and they donate, so.
Okay, oh, I love that. And are they Inkster specific or are they?
Oh, yeah, everything Inkster, for sure.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes, and for the young lady who just asked that question, is there any organizations that you would like to see be considered? Because that's what she's just asking for, is there any additional Inkster organizations that you would like for them to have, have that information at least?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we, we hit you up, you don't have to worry. Turn, turn your mic on, Commissioner Williams. And Mara, turn your mic on over there too.
Anyone else for the general public who should speak at this time? Any other further questions from the commissioners?
I just want to make sure that you saw the recommendations by the planner and you were, you're comfortable with abiding by all of them.
Yes, we definitely are. We reviewed them ahead of time, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just as it relates to the chain link fence, is it just a new chain link fence, or is it something different?
Yeah.
It's just for the general public, I mean, I've.
Sorry.
I've read it. I just, just for the general public, the people are listening here.
Gotcha, yes.
Yes, that's a new chain link fence.
Yep, exactly.
So it's a new chain link fence.
Yes, yes.
Iron fence. And he can, he can speak to that actually more than I can.
Okay, just which side are you talking about? Because we have two different kinds of fences. We have one existing as of today. They recommend they can change it and we are proposing to change.
To what?
To, it's going to be a higher fence and it has, every six feet, it will have a little bit of concrete and it will be like six feet high. So when you pass by, you're not going to see, maybe you will see, but if you're walking, you're not going to be able to see the buildings. It'll be a six foot high fence.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Hold on a second.
No, I was done, yeah, I just want to start the conversation.
Okay, Commissioner, thanks.
So, to reiterate, you're saying that in between these chain links, when I think chain link, I'm thinking regular chain link, not black rod iron. Chain link. And then between the chain link fence, you're going to have brick pillars? So repeat what you just said.
Okay, the proposed, it's not going to be a chain. The proposed will be concrete in the middle and it's going to be vinyl in between.
That's what I, I know I heard brick.
Yes.
So will not be chain link.
Will not be. And there's another, I believe it's on the west side, there is a section is going to be all concrete wall. So that concrete wall is going to be on the south end, but on the street towards the street, it will be a vinyl, six feet high, and will have pillars in between.
So you won't even be able to see inside? And that was my question, because I couldn't see a chain link brick, I could see black rod and brick. But I could not see chain link and brick. So you're saying that where there's brick, you won't be able to see in it at all, it's eight foot high? And then the other side again is?
All concrete.
All concrete.
Yes, right now as it exists is a chain link fence, but we're going to work on, our proposals to complete it.
All brand new.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair, just to clarify, I think I heard a different.
Chair, just to clarify, I think I heard a different material, but this plan says iron.
Yes.
I think.
It'll be, it's either iron, I'm sorry, it's either going to be iron or vinyl, but it will be.
Yeah.
So the material might be changing to vinyl, but it will be the same height.
I guess the, the purpose of it is for it to be opaque so that nobody can see through, but it would just depend on, um, the materials, what's available with, uh, the shortage of materials right now, but people are just taking what they can get. But the, the, um, the goal is to, uh, is to ensure that it's opaque so that nobody can see it.
Yeah, I'm only asking for clarification for, um, how durable the material will be. I mean, iron is different than vinyl.
I think iron would last a whole lot, a whole lot longer than, than vinyl, but.
We can put, um, I mean, we have it on the plan as iron. If we can place it to keep it as iron, we'll keep it iron. Yeah.
Land Department. Land Department.
Yeah, so this can, thank you Chair, this can be, uh, part of the final cycle process. And whatever recommend as one of the conditions of approval, uh, that will be what. So, iron, you can say iron.
It's already iron on the plan, but.
And it'll definitely last long anyways.
All right. Yeah, let's move on for the general public, please approach the podium. And state your name for the record.
Yeah, no, Commissioner. I'd like, oh, Ruth Williams, I'd like to make a statement about that six foot fence. Because of the area, I'm really familiar with the area, I think an eight foot fence would be more appropriate area. Because you got strapped, place right back there, then you got a lot of kids come up and down. I'm saying six foot, and I heard, um, Ms. Daniels talk about the, the weaving and what type of fence, chain fence, they said at first, we have to be, be understandable about our kids in that community.
Yeah.
You do have a resident, even though they're talking, that is on the south side, yes it is. There's homes on the south side. So I'm concerned about that six foot, should be an eight foot.
Sorry about that, okay, thank you.
And that rod, rod iron, that you want.
So in response to, um, the lady, the woman's concerns, I think there might be, and I'm not entirely sure, I'd have to look into it, but I think there's a, there might be a restriction in the ordinance on having fences that high. Because I know in, um, the neighboring city, there, there is, in the city of Dearborn, they just recently had to amend their ordinance to allow for higher fences, because, um, there was a restriction on going, I think above four or five feet. So now they can do six, but I think there might also be a restriction in the city of Inkster, if I'm not mistaken. But some, if, if the city planners know, might know better than I do, or the city attorney.
I was, we got, the city attorney's not here, so I was going to ask the city planners either, I guess, one or two days, if you could speak to it now, or if there's something you have to investigate.
Something that we can investigate more is, uh, searching our ordinance as we were discussing this. And, uh, a lot of the language is, you know, sixty. Seeing some maximums of eight as well. So I want to do a little bit of research, um, and if, say that taller fences are required or revert, that can be part of the, um, the rule. Uh, but if that's not, it can basically say in accordance with what's. If it's not allowed to go up to that height, we're.
Okay, and I did also just want to write a little bit of clarification, let you all know that the windows of the building, everything is barricaded, and okay, nobody can see into the building. So nobody, even if you're, you're walking by and you happen to be in the door, it's like six foot four, and then you can see in, you still would not be able to see what's going on, the operations, everything is completely, um, uh, everything's completely included in the building itself, there's no operations that are happening outside the building. And then, um, the building is completely opaque, there are no windows where you can see into the building, everything is covered. So nobody would be able to see in and know what's going on. And then also, um, because it's a cultivation as opposed to a, a, a retailer or a dispensary, there's no, um, there, there's no storefronts, there are no sales happening, um, so there's even no advertising of the building, right? You know, it's not like, we won't put a big fancy sign that says cultivation, but there will be any of that. So you guys don't have to, you know, you don't have to worry about anyone knowing what's going on.
Exactly. I, I, I'm new kid on the block, but I, as I was reading your, uh,
Social Equity Plan.
Well, all of this, I, I came up, I, it's saw that you guys had submitted something as far as the odor was concerned. I don't know a lot about marijuana, except that it stinks. And I'm wondering, is that going to be a problem for the residents over there?
That's an excellent question, and you were asking that, so it, it won't, and the reason is, um, we actually submitted a very, uh, a very in-depth, uh, plan that specifically focuses on how to mitigate odor. So we, we have a, um, three-step solution. How fair it is. So we're going to have an activated, um, carbon filtration equipment in there. Um, there's going to be three different types of equipment that we're going to have in there. One of them is model R sixty-six R and L media air cleaner. And, um, I know this all sounds like mumble deco, but, um, in, uh, in, 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 uh, late terms, it's a self-contained media air purification system, designed for general background or the duct or for source capture applications. And we're also going to have something called the Can Filter one fifty Carbon Filter, um, System. And what can filters do is they utilize activated carbon filter technology to greatly minimize pathogens and odors that are present in the facility. Those are going to be installed horizontally on the ceilings of the facility using high-powered fans, um, to pull air through the filter to remove odors and pathogens. And then we're also going to have ozone generators, and those machines are very effective at breaking down odors and contaminants. Um, it's an effective sterilizer and will be used to help remove any strong odor orders and eliminate mold spores from the entire core area. Do a very comprehensive, um, plan, uh, to, to mitigate any odors. So, um, there, there won't be any odors outside the facility itself, it'll all be contained on the facility.
One.
And Mr. Chair, I can just chime in, I think that if, well, you have to do it all since you can put it on the plan now, that the planning department, how can we make that a requirement for all cultivation centers to do that? Because if they do that, I mean, that's, that's ideal, that's what you want.
Exactly.
Hi, so an odor and waste mitigation plan is a requirement for all projects moving forward. And we say that because in order for the planning staff to determine that this project meets the, the neighborhood character, existing neighborhood character, or a bone have odor and waste pollution as one standard sites in zoning ordinance, we need to know that there's a, or odor and waste mitigation plan. And the applicant supplies both of these plans. Just so you guys know, the State of Michigan Cannabis Regulatory Agency does regulate waste. But I have not found an agency that does regulate odor. So it's good that at a city level, we're having this conversation. And if you don't mind, Chair, I have a question, because maybe, um, Attorney Hamad?
Hamedy.
What?
Hamedy.
Hamedy?
Yeah, I got it.
Close. Hamedy, sorry. I saw your first encounter, I'm trying to be professional. Maybe attorney knows if the Department of Environment, Air, and Energy, Eagle regulates odor?
Totally don't, surprisingly. I think that they, I actually think that they should, because isn't this an issue? And, um, I'm glad that the city of Inkster is dealing with this, but this has been a concern of other cities as well. And it was something that they just didn't anticipate, because the state of Michigan didn't include it in the, uh, in the CRA's rules and regulations. Whereas they did focus a lot on waste, um, but they didn't focus at all on odor. And I think it was one of those things they just didn't anticipate, so the municipalities didn't anticipate it either. But it is something that is very important and something that should be addressed. Um, I know M DART, which is the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, they've, um, done a very good job of, uh, looking into the ventilation, but that's more so because cultivation is considered agriculture. And since it's considered, you know, agriculture, and it includes a crop, like you have to, um, under all the applicants, um, in cultivation, they actually have to adhere to all the same requirements that somebody growing like broccoli would, for example. And oftentimes that's, that's overlooked, people, you know, people don't know. And, uh, and, and usually even like the, the cultivation centers, they don't know. And so Land DART comes knocking on their door to assess the facility, and then there's this random inspection that they didn't anticipate happening. But right now, M DART is starting to work very closely with the CRA, um, and they weren't in the past, but since the last year, they've started working very closely with them to make sure that the growth and the cultivation of facilities, that they're following those additional expectations like the ventilation. You have to follow everything under Michigan OSHA, other Michigan OSHA standards, the work protection standards. And if you're using pesticides and stuff, there has to be a very strong, you know, ventilation system in place to make sure that the employees are safe. And so, uh, that is something that, I, the CRA, the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, didn't really touch up on originally when they were drafting the ordinances, and now they're working with M DART to enforce, um, to enforce that through M DART. So not through the CRA, it would be through M DART, but that is a, that is an expectation of the ventilation, um, be done in, 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 in a way that doesn't, uh, doesn't subject the employees to harm, because they're in there all day and there are no windows, right? So you need to have a really strong filtration system and a ventilation system in place.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that too, uh, guys, because, you know, we get a lot of those particular concerns and questions for this commissioner and for city council, um, especially when they do types of different air quality tests down in Detroit, South, Southwest Detroit, to be specific, where the Marathon Refinery is. And they talk about the heavy metals and different pollutants and things of that nature that are in the air, um, you know, and, and different employees have worked there for over the years, and they don't have any documented proof that it's affected their health, when in fact it has, they just haven't come out and said it. They probably will in the future, and it'll be, it's going to be too late.
Yes, exactly.
So I'm glad that that's, is being addressed, has been addressed, hopefully, you know, the state gets on board, because a lot of people don't realize the state votes on laws, and they continue to change the laws as they finalize them. But then it's already a race to the finisher, who can do what? And then you're trying to get these people with grandfathered in to go back and change what they already done installed, and they're like, oh no. So I'm glad to hear that. Um, as far as the, my question, as far as the social equity plan, would this be posted online anywhere for citizens of Inkster, whoever, to be able to pull it up?
So it will be posted on the MR, I'm sorry, the CRA's website, because they do post the social equity plan so long as we give them permission. So it'll be there, but in the rest of the city of Inkster, what we can do is that, I was going to say, we could put it on the website, but you are very much restricted on, on, um, what can be on these websites. I don't think that there would be anything that's posting the social equity plan on our, uh, on our website, which I can speak to. Uh, I mean, are you anywhere close to having the social equity plan? If it is wanting to be posted on the CRA's website, are you close to us also posting it on the, on the website for the, uh, for the company itself?
Okay, all righty, well. Just whenever you get us a chance, let us know what the website is as well, in the near future, so we can share it with our residents as well.
Could you guys consider maybe asking all the applicants to have, to post their social equity plans? Or to provide you guys with them, so you guys can post them on the city website too, that might be effective. Even though we're totally willing to, we would love to post it on our website as well, but maybe just so that they, because all the other adult use facilities are required by the state to have one. So they all probably have one, since they're required to, so that would be, it might be good for the rest.
That's something to think about, most definitely, just because it's a governmental website to check with our city attorneys, about what, close to what, what we can on there. Um, Mar, so your hand up.
I, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just online right now, and the Cannabis Regulatory Agency has a, an All-Star program. And you can either be the bronze level and write your social equity program, or you can be at the silver level and have your social equity plan with a corporate spend plan, or you can be in the gold level with all the things I just stated, the corporate spend plan and the social equity plan. And then on top of that, you would have a community reinvestment plan. There are always examples on the State of Michigan's website, and that's something that we are considering in later on today in our, our marijuana policy.
And these are all new things that the state just implemented. So originally, it was just social equity, and then that was it. So they just started the, all these new initiatives. So, um, as far as I know, I don't know of any dispensaries that have caught up yet, just because I think the attorneys are working a little bit slow behind the scenes. But, um, this is a change that they recently did, and we think it's a change for the better. And they're starting to hold companies accountable for their social equity plans, which I appreciate, because a lot of people said that they were going to do these things. And then there was, there was no enforcement agen- agency to go and hold them accountable to any of these things that they were promising, which is wrong. So I like now that they're starting to post them, they're posting the social equity plans online, so people know that, hey, you've made this promise to the city, or you've made this promise to these cities to do this work. There, they are taking, I, I commend this, yeah, we're taking these steps to make sure that this work is actually being implemented. And it's not just said that we're going to do this and then not follow it.
Yeah, it's, it's a planning commission that I've heard that applicants agree to. If you want to add the condition of, of posting the social equity plan to the site, it would be the city's, uh, work to create a webpage for them to put up there.
Create a webpage or a subsection?
Yeah.
Be that, that's.
The social equity plan.
Got you, okay. You guys heard that?
So, so the city of Inkster is able to do that? I mean, I mean, that is, that's something that we can actually do? Okay.
I can do that.
Well, absolutely, Ben, yes.
We can do it.
That's a good thing.
That's a very good thing.
All right, so, um, I guess, make her the motion. Get ready to, uh.
As the planner stated.
Was, did we have a motion on the floor when we started, when we went into comments?
We did that publicly here, okay. All righty, anything for, Mar?
I was just, um, make sure that when we're making a motion, we, um, say that it's conditional upon approval of the two eight five five zero Reynolds resounding, which city council has the final authority for that. And then if there's any, so the recommendation, same commission, or, 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 planning department recommended the chain link fence, uh, be removed or replaced, but you have the police powers as a body to require it. So wherever we see recommendations, it can change to require.
Mr. Chair, not to belabor it, um, I know that the street at the end is shared with the, um, what is that, their bishops? And then some, some other companies is there? You guys are putting the concrete wall there, or where's the concrete wall?
Walls on the south end.
So above the railroad, the railroad tracks? So the railroad tracks are putting the, uh, concrete, okay? And then what about on the, the west side? At the end of the street where you have bishops?
So between, between us and the junkyard?
Uh-huh.
I believe that's going to be the same fence as we're going to have on the other.
Okay.
Which is the six feet high, or if you recommend, it will be eight feet high.
Mm-hmm. And they'll, they'll still be able to have access?
All right, so there is, where the railroad track, there is no question for the fence. So it's only going to be a chain link fence, the one that, that exists.
Okay.
On the north end, it's going to be that six foot high or eight foot high wall.
You mean on the east end? Along Harrison Street?
Along Harrison is right here.
Yeah, so that's where you're.
Six foot high as well.
Yeah.
That's going to be, or eight foot, if you guys recommend.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's going to be the metal fence.
How, so as it relates to access to that street for the customers that utilize it for the scrapping yard? And are you guys, how are you guys working that out?
So if they're, if they're going to go towards the yard, they're not going to see anything on Harrison. And, well, in the front, we're going to have the parking lot, and we're going to have the door, so they're not going to be able to see anything.
I'm not concerned with necessarily seeing anything, and I know that, um, for most of the facilities here in Inkster, it's already, um, up and running. They're pretty much enclosed. So only, the only traffic that goes into the fence, um, you know, going to their area is for cultivating. In this particular, since you guys have a, a road that runs right through you to the scrapyard and other business. So that's what I'm, I'm. So that's what I'm, I'm asking as it relates to you guys working with each other, are you guys gonna still have a lockdown? Like, how does that, how does that look? Yeah.
You talking about the shared use of Reynolds Street?
Right.
On Reynolds, there is no fence. But if.
Well, there is an existing fence at the, again, from your building. Across where the junkyard is and the.
Right now, there's no fence. But if.
Yeah, it is.
Reynolds.
So, so not, not, so, so you have, so if you're driving into Reynolds, right, you just go past your building, you come to a fence.
Yeah.
Is there for the scrapyard.
Correct.
So how does that look? Are you guys replacing that? That's what I'm asking.
So essentially, we're gonna go up to.
No, no, we're not talking about here, we're talking about here. He's talking about the, the, the yard fence, are we changing that? I don't think there's any.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about just what I said. So if you drive in past your building, your building's on the right, right? You got the railroad tracks on the left. You drive to the, in the Reynolds Street, it's where the scrapyard is. And there's a fence that's there now, that they access and take out different, for their customers. How does that, how do you guys envision that working?
Well, that's not gonna get affected.
Okay. Are you guys putting a new fence there or no?
So I believe what's gonna happen is our, our new fence is gonna come along it like this. So there, 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 because there's another business there too.
Right.
Which those two fences, they are still gonna have to have the access.
Correct.
To their buildings. So our fence would stop before they're open.
Gotcha, okay. But you guys won't have necessarily like a drive, you know, like in some of these cultivations, as soon as you actually see, you have a keypad, you gotta get through. Yeah, for sure.
The bishops, I already spoke with them in the last meeting. Definitely are gonna want something like that as long as all three of us can agree to have the same system or same fence that's gonna work for all three of us. That's definitely something we'd like to do. If we can close that off, with all three parties are okay with that.
Yeah, I think we were willing to close it off, but I think they were hesitant about closing it off and having the, the punch pad. Because they said they have more traffic coming in and out, whereas they don't have traffic cultivation, because it's cultivation. And so, I mean, they were a little bit, they were somewhat opposed to having the keypad in there. We're more than comfortable having a lot set up that way. But we're willing to continue negotiating with them to do so, if that's something that you guys think would be a great idea.
Yeah, I know that, you know, when they were here before, you know, and, and came their concern was just that. And I know, I mean, that you and your dad actually spoke with them and Freddie said that you guys were good, you know, for the most part. And that's why we approved of the first go around. I mean, if it wasn't for this technical, you know, situation, we wouldn't be having a discussion. However, you know, I know that they're worried about their business being affected by your business, so I just wanna make sure.
Because in order for us to be compliant with the, with the city and whatnot, our fence is not gonna affect it.
Okay.
But in the, I still would refer to have that gate, that's all three of us can compare. That's just gonna eliminate all that traffic.
For sure.
We don't wanna do anything that might negatively impact their business in any way, shape, or form, but they've been very collaborative.
For sure, and I can say on the record that they are, we, we, we've spoken and went about it and they did come to the meeting the last time that we had it. So just wanna make sure that with the new plan, because it is what it is, that you guys are addressing that.
Yeah, and we wanna be sure that we're not stepping on their toes and want them to get along.
For sure.
Can we answer any more questions?
For the questions, commissioners? Land department, any further questions?
I think it might be good for the record to understand clarity on what fences are being placed. Um, so the north, east, southwest, where are these fences on?
Yeah, so the north and the east. These are the two with the bubbles, that's what's being changed. And then if, if all three parties will agree, the one on the south will be changed, that would be a gated area to get to Reynolds. That would include three businesses to agree on that.
So the east side would be Harrison Street. That's why.
Yes.
North side would be behind the building going towards Michigan Avenue.
Correct.
That's two. And then the west side is Bishop's Auto Wrecking. That's, that fence is already there, right?
Yes, there's a high fence there and it's privacy anyways.
And then the south side is what we're talking about with Reynolds Street. And is it on, I'm about to confuse y'all, is it on the north side of Reynolds or the south side or?
It's on the north side of.
North side or, okay. Now, the debate is closing off Reynolds Street for all three businesses.
Correct.
So they can be more secure. Mara?
Yeah, sure, so also we have to take into consideration, I'm sure applicants thinking about this too, but the, how the parcel's south of Reynolds. I, there, I don't know if the owner owns those as well, uh, you do? Oh, okay, hold on.
Alright, any further questions, planning, yes?
I just have to say, there's one thing on the record, there is an existing wood fence to the west of the property that abuts the salvage yard. Um, but that is owned by the salvage yard.
Okay. Anybody else? Alright, thank you guys. Alrighty, so we need to close the public here for this case and then we need to vote on a special act. So everybody's straight, okay? Floor is open for a motion to close the public here for item B.
It's almost.
Second. The property move and second. Call the favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the polls, motion passes, public hearing is now closed. Now the floor is open for a motion. We're gonna need to recap on that real quick, because someone has to make a motion with those conditions, with the additional condition for the social equity plan. And what else was?
The fences is. This is. I was just helping you out and the fences as well, right?
That's what I'm saying, whoever makes the motion, I wanna make sure all those items are included.
And, yeah, we have, we have sample language that the planner provided too.
We just had to add to it though, right? I think that's what Mara was saying, to make sure that we add to that. About.
And Mr. Chair, just for a recommendation, the planner did say that she could state it and then the maker of the motion can just say, as the planner stated.
Exactly.
Well, you're not missing nothing.
Yeah. Next time you guys. Okay.
You said it.
Uh, so I recommend that the planning commission recommends approval of the proposed special land use for a recreational marijuana grow facility. At two eight four four zero and two eight five five zero Reynolds, to city council with the required conditions listed below. First, the project receives approval to be rezoned like industrial by city council. So I'm saying two eight five five zero receives approval to be rezoned to city council. Two, to replace the chain link fence along Harrison Street with a more visually appealing material. Three, to replace or to create a fence on the north side of the parcel. Or to provide a social equity plan and post it on the city website. And then following our abide by all requirements and site plan review, including a required lot combination of the two parcels. Provide information regarding onset filtration system. Install no smoking signs. Add a note agreeing to inspections upon request by the building official, fire department, and law enforcement officials. Add a note agreeing to quarterly inspections. Add a note indicating that all marijuana related activity will be done indoors. And add a note agreeing to meet state and local environmental standards for any emanating water around the facility.
And the floor is open for a motion to. Recommend that to the city council.
Mr. Chair, after we went through all of the fencing discussion, so this talks about new fencing on Harrison. But I think we also heard them say that there would be new fencing on the north side as well, which is not along Harrison.
She, she said that.
We need to.
She just, she did state that.
Oh, you said Harrison.
She said the north, which is the backside of the building along Michigan Avenue.
I'm so sorry. Thank you.
So make the motion.
So, floor is open for a motion. And so approve or recommend the special land use to city council. Heard everything that the city said.
No, I, I think, no, see, we need, you asked for somebody to make the motion, right? So I thought that's what she was doing, but you were just helping us out.
She can.
That's what I thought, so you were just helping us out.
Yes, yes, she was reading all the actions.
Right.
Okay, I'm gonna try this.
Well, I, I would. I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, please, sir, please.
Make the motion to approve based on what the planning, the planning department recommendation is.
So this will be to recommend to city council, correct?
Second.
Alright, so it's been properly moved and second. Is there any further discussion or an amendment to the motion? Here and there, in all the favor. Aye. All the polls.
We gonna get it.
Motion.
Cause you threw me off a little bit there, cause I'm writing these notes, I'm like, we did not amend the motion, right, okay. Okay.
Please excuse me for the being. Alright, we're down to, um, item C. Case number twenty-two dash twenty-six, special land use marijuana micro business at three zero one nine one Michigan Avenue. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All the favor?
Aye.
All the polls, motion passes, public hearing now open. Review and consideration of recommendation of approval of a special land use request for a marijuana micro business. Which includes small scale grow, cultivation and retail uses in the B three general business district at three zero one nine one Michigan Avenue. See to sale is the applicant. Mara, you have a floor.
Thank you, I will refer to my cleaning colleague, Gage Felker.
Gage, you have a floor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so this property is located up in Michigan Avenue. Uh, the applicant sees the sale of two parcels right next to each other, three zero one nine one and three zero one eight one. Uh, three zero one nine one is the address that has the special land, so that is why we're focusing on that parcel. Uh, this is for the placement, or well, for the reuse of an existing one story building, uh, seventy-two hundred Murphy. Currently vacant, uh, for a marijuana micro business. Just a more detailed definition, marijuana micro business is a licensed facility for the cultivation of not more than one hundred and fifty marijuana plants. Also within that same facility, there will be processing, packaging marijuana. Um, and also selling and otherwise transferring that product to individuals. They must comply with all marijuana safety regulations, uh, as they outlined. So again, uh, this parcel that's under consideration is point five nine acres, front of the law, Michigan Avenue. And both parcels that the applicant owns are the three general business districts, which marijuana related micro businesses are in use of course. Uh, so pending any, uh, questions, comments from the public during this public hearing. We do recommend that the planning mission, uh, consider following. Uh, to recommend approval to city council of the proposed special land use for a marijuana micro business at three zero one nine one Michigan Avenue. Subject to the following conditions. All requirements, uh, are either by a site plan review. You think that limited to revise hours of operation in compliance with chapter one one four. That's all the details for the metric plan, just to ensure a light feature. Second, uh, we ask for a note, uh, agreeing to inspections, um, similar to the last applicant for building, fire, and law enforcement officials. Uh, as well as quarterly inspections. Um, and finally, uh, that all, uh, I'm sorry, that the applicant applies all the rules and regulations established by the marijuana. So with that, I.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, this is a public hearing, so general public, you have an opportunity to approach the podium and state your name for the record to speak on the item at hand, which is a. Micro business at three zero one nine one Michigan Avenue.
My name is Ruth Wains.
My name is Martha Tice Lee.
John Sahid, I'm the consultant for the applicant.
Alright, okay. As you can see, uh, this is the existing building. As now, it's a, it used to be a collision shop, right now it's vacant. And I'm sorry, I don't have a bigger one. I went to Kinkus and they, all their machine are out of order, lucky days. So anyway, uh, this is the existing building and, uh, this is what we are proposing. So, uh, actually the building right now has a low roof. Uh, we propose a higher roof for the building with, uh, two entrances, two main focal point on the building. And on the side also, we have the same as here on the side. So driving on Michigan Avenue, you will see that elaborated entrance on both sides, from here and from the other side. Uh, so we're proposing, uh, uh, two micro business inside and not more than one fifty per business, one fifty plant. Uh, and a little lobby area with a display on each side, okay? So I don't know if you have the floor plan, do they have the plan? Okay, sorry, just to make sure. So, uh, regarding the building, even though it's a, a small micro business, more than, not more than one fifty plant. The applicant lawyer gave us a draft for order mitigation and for, uh, waste mitigation. They're ready to sign it and will present it to your body and to city council by their signature. They're probably tweaking some word, but, uh, the planning, the planners have it in their hand. So the, uh, they understand fully, uh, the order, even though the building on the west side, there won't be any opening. There won't be opening on the, on, uh, the east side other than exit door due to the code requirement for exit, uh, for fire safety. And the back also for fire safety and, uh, loading and loading. All the activity will be in the back. So the building itself was screened the site, there's not, nobody can see anything other than the beautiful building in the front. They're, we are recommending ornamental, uh, rough iron in the front, where, um, the west and the front. And where the adjourned parcel, there will be a vinyl coated, uh, chain length fence. We, we were gonna propose at the same time, but we waited for the next lot, it's going to be retail, normal one and other. It's going to be a retail on the other lot, it's huge enough to entertain, uh, mixed use, uh, retail on the other side. So that's why we have the chain length fence, we don't wanna do ornamental, because we also provided one parking for the handicap. We didn't wanna put them on the front, because the building come on a high, about seven feet high from Michigan Avenue. Stuff for a handicap to park on the front. So we did the parking on the adjacent property, we'll have a, you know, the, you know, we will have a lease agreement to use that parking only. Because it's flat. And from there, we have a passage to the building for him to come, okay? So we almost, I don't wanna say that, I, I mean, we almost comply or maybe fully comply with the zoning requirement regarding parking, lighting, security. Enhancement of the site, landscape impercity, uh, of Inkster requirement, zoning requirement. And if we miss anything, we will be more than happy to redo them. And with respect to. And with respect to, uh, uh, that note left out for the inspection, of course, there will be inspection, we'll add it to the plan. But all the other requirement are depicted on the site plan, uh, the planning commission recommendation. So we revised the plan, submitted back, and, uh, we look forward for any question or discussion, either to me or to the applicant on our operation. All right, thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, this is, uh, it's not too restrictive, but, uh, that's how it's gonna be, and, uh, it's little bit visible, not too much because of the nature of the building. It's like two property, we cannot put anything here, because there's a wall divider. So we resulted to the transparency to be that much. Just a little constraint, and whoever is walking on Michigan Avenue, it's not gonna be able to see anyway, because it's so high.
All right. Um, commissioners, no one from the general public got to speak, the applicant came before us, so at this time, if you all have any questions or comments, please feel free to address applicant.
Mister Chair, I just wanted to ask, uh, the applicants, have you read the planner's report and, um, know and understand the findings, um, from the planners? You read it all and you, okay, yes, just wanna make sure.
You ready? All right, anybody else?
And you're comfortable with the recommendations that you read?
And then again, going second for, around for the general public, anyone from the general public, since the applicant has spoken, um, any comments or questions? All right, here and now, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, if all minds are satisfied, the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing for item C.
Close the public hearing, item C.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls? Motion passes, public hearing now, is, is now closed. Our floor is open for a motion for the recommendations of city council for the special land use. All the required, her recommendations and plan commission will require. Twisted myself up.
Is that, or is the, um, other link, other, uh, recommended language is on seventy-six, is that right?
Page seventy-six.
Um, I just wanna make sure I'm on the right one.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Mara.
I have page two.
I thought it was three.
Page two.
The two or three. Okay, okay.
Wait, two is site plan?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, special. And if it helps in other communities, uh, the motions are made by the state, uh, PDG schedule, and commissioners can say, you may move to, uh, require all the requirements listed in the planner's report dated September, the planner's report stated, uh, nineteenth.
But that's not page two of the PDF, right?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I'm, it's like, deep in there, right? Yeah, seventy, I, I thought it was seventy-six.
Yeah, I think if you get to seventy-six, scroll down about seventy-eight, maybe. That's seventy-eight starts the special land use review letter.
SPR twenty-two point seven, SL twenty-two point six.
Mm-hmm.
So what, what page number? Well, not the PDF, but that review letter.
Oh, got it.
Yep.
Well, that's what you meant, okay. All right.
Because it's easier that way, because they had the project summary, they also have the recommendations, and they also have the way they was, the, 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 the move, the recommendation of how to state the motion.
Yep.
So it's kinda like really nicely put together, yeah.
The floor is still open for a motion.
Um. I move to recommend approval of the proposed special land use for a marijuana micro business at three zero one nine one Michigan Avenue to city council, uh, with the required conditions, um, as listed on the planner's review. I see four, um, I'll stop there. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls? Motion passes. All righty, we have no unfinished business, we're moving right along to new business. Item A, case number twenty-two dash twenty-four, site plan. Site plan application for two eight four four zero dash two eight five five zero Reynolds for a marijuana grow and cultivation facility and armored vehicle terminal facility. Review and consideration of approval of the proposed site plan for the proposed placement of a marijuana grow and cultivation facility and an armored vehicle terminal facility in the proposed rezoned M-one light industrial district at two eight four four zero dash two eight five five zero Reynolds Avenue in Ace, NSH O D is the applicant. Mara, do you wish to recap or brief anyone on this, or commissioners, do you want to brief it on this? All right, here and now. Floor is open for a motion to approve the site plan as listed with the.
So I'll move. Let's see.
So.
So the property moved and seconded. Is there discussion or unreadiness?
Just for clarification, I think Hall actually seconded before.
Oh, we, okay, I heard a voice, but I. Uh, Mara.
What is the motion, Chair?
To approve the site plan.
Okay, wait, uh.
That's what, you should, you should say with the recommendation.
That's why.
Yeah, uh.
That's why, yeah. Discussion, go ahead.
We are in discussion, okay.
We're gonna amend the motion, cause I don't think it was, it was just. Anybody?
Yeah. Um, man, that's such a long, such a long document, but, uh, I, the one thing that, um, stands out is that there was a recommendation that the fence be painted, um, black and coated with vinyl. Um, I think that's worth discussing, whether that should or should not be included in our, um, our final decision. Um, dumpster screening. There's a lot of very specific things that the planner put in here about, like, that are, um, recommendations, so I just wanted to lift, lift up that there's an opportunity to discuss those.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon?
Need the planner to brief us on those?
Could you?
I'm, I'd like clarity, Chair.
Absolutely.
Uh, we're discussing the site plan for two eight five five zero Reynolds.
That's correct.
Okay, so. Provided there's consensus on the planning commission regarding the special land use review and rezoning, we recommend the planning commission consider the motion stated above. The list of requirements contain elements that have been reviewed administratively, so this does not need to put a pause in any.
Uh, yeah.
Um, so I move to approve the proposed site plan for a recreational marijuana grow facility and a terminal facility for armored vehicles at two eight four four zero and two eight five five zero Reynolds, provided that the special land use approvals are granted by city council and the rezoning is granted to two eight five five zero Reynolds to be, or be, to convert from B-three to B, to M-one. The two parcels are combined, zoning districts are fixed on the site plan. Um, zoning districts are mentioned as B-three, so they need to be, uh, edited to be to M-one. Perform all of the listed requirements in the landscaping section, including without limit to removing the right-of-way trees that will be in the right-of-way, which I think the planner or the applicant already amended it. Um, providing the irrigation system in detail and where it will be located on the site plan. Receive a waiver for planning commission to have twelve parking spaces produced, which the city planner recommends. Receive approval from the city engineer and fire chief on impact of public services, vehicle and access circulation, emergency hazards and vulnerability to hazards, and provide information related to the security camera that's required with the zoning coordinates to address any other comments based on the nineteen review. So those are the, the conditions that is declared, is it, or any more in this here? I don't know, um, I'd like to address and clarify.
I said the wrong thing.
Okay, okay.
I did, I said the wrong thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so.
And just for the record, Mister Chair, for the general public, as the ordinance stands today, um, this is a cultivating center. Um, and cultivating centers are required by ordinance as it relates to the buffer to be three hundred feet away from residential areas. So it just, I came, um, up on, um, from one of the audience members on, um, just cause it says on Facebook Live. Um, I'm sorry, Zoom, it's on Zoom, that, um, it needed to be a thousand feet away. So I just wanted to make sure that we put that in, in, just for the general public, this is a cultivating center.
Oh, and, and not a.
Retail, a retail facility.
Thank you.
So retail is a thousand?
Retail is a thousand.
Can you say that more clearly, Mister Chair?
Uh, as it stands currently, as our ordinance states that, uh, for cultivating center, they have to be three hundred feet away from residential area. So, um, one of the audience members on Zoom has stated that it should be a thousand feet away. But that's not the case. The law states three hundred feet away for cultivating centers and a thousand feet for retails, as the ordinance stands today.
Thank you.
All right, Mara.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, Mayor. Um, additionally, so on page thirteen of the review, marijuana grower, so also I just wanna clarify too, the state of Michigan does not use the term cultivation, they use the term grow, so we're trying to transfer, um, have this language clear clarity throughout state of Michigan. That's why I've been referred to as grow facility throughout the whole night instead of cultivation, but you are correct, the city ordinance does say cultivation, so we'll be changing that one that we ordinance. So in number one of our additional youth standards, uh, for recreational marijuana grow establishments, we have that the grow establishments shall be a minimum of three hundred feet previous, measured as a short distance from door to door to any structure in a residentially zoned district. In a minimum of a thousand feet measured from existence door to door to any library, church, childcare center, licensed daycare center, preschool program, primary, intermediate, secondary school, drug-free zone or like facility. So this project meets all of those locational buffers and the planning department is vigilant to not to request, uh, waste and odor mitigation plan, because we do recognize the sensitivity in the area. However, this, this project meets all of the requirements based on city ordinance.
All right, um, who, I know Commissioner Hall seconded the motion, who? Made the motion initially?
Commissioner Bradford.
Commissioner Bradford? All right, uh, just for clarity, I'm on page thirteen of the review, uh, the recommendations, I'm just gonna ask, if you like, just for clarity, to amend the motion since it's worded as it is on, on page thirteen.
I will amend the motion.
All right, we have page thirteen before you?
I do now. What number is that on our, in our agenda?
So on the agenda, it will be page, oh, thirteen of one nineteen.
One nineteen?
Thirty-three.
Page thirteen.
Of one hundred and ninety-six years. I'm sorry, I said that wrong, it's actually, it's page thirteen of my packet, but it's actually page three of the review letter, that's what it is.
I was just saying, the PDF number is this one, and the letter number is this one.
We on, we on a different one.
Got it. You got it, Cheryl? It's three, no, that's not it. It's on page. Have you waited too far? You got a long ones. No, page three.
Yeah, that's it, you know, something about that language right there. Yeah, that's the, that's the right one, right, Mara?
Page three?
Three, the review letter, thirteen of the pack. Right?
Unless you're on tax, page three, Chair.
Okay, page three, so that's it.
So all of this from, to the one, right?
Well, you can say it as listed below.
Okay, I make, uh, motion to amend the, or make a motion to amend the motion to state it as the language listed here in our, uh, site plan or, uh, in the special land use consideration.
I would say you could say you amend the motion to make it state, I move to recommend, and just read that.
I move to recommend, uh, and just read the special land use considerations first.
Read the whole, lose.
Okay, pending any comments from the public, is that what you're referring to?
The one right there says, I move to recommend approval of the proposed special land use for recreational. Mara?
Right here, son. I believe what we're discussing right now is the site plan.
So I'm on the wrong page.
We're on, okay, um.
She's asking if she can assist.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, the planner recommends approval of the proposed site plan for a recreational marijuana grow facility and a terminal facility for armored vehicles.
Oh, I'm sorry, just tell us to scroll down.
Yeah, just tell us what page is on, and that way we.
I just, I'm at the top, I'm sorry, you, we supposed to be at the second part.
Yeah.
Yes, I started, so scrolled out a page a little bit.
I said it was a long ways from it, I figured that one.
So the site plan consideration.
Yes.
Okay, just read that part. I make a motion to amend, uh, the motion to the site plan of the site plan consideration, provided there is a consensus, is that part?
Nope, just admitting your motion to see the blurb right there where it says, I move to approve the proposed site plan.
That part.
So I just wanted to clear it up to state.
Okay, I move to approve. Approve the proposed site plan for recreational marijuana, marijuana grow facility and a terminal facility for armored vehicles at two eight four four zero and two eight five five zero Reynolds Avenue. Parcel, keep going, or is that good?
Um, you can jump right to where it says provided that.
Okay.
Right after.
Reynolds Avenue parcel ID forty-four dash zero zero eight dash zero two dash zero zero two seven dash zero zero one and forty-four zero zero eight dash, uh, oh, two dash zero zero two seven dash zero zero two, provided that the special land use approvals are granted by the city council and the, and contingent on the following.
And is there still a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion, and is that clear? Mara.
I, I mean, I would just recommend adding contingent on the following requirements listed in the planner's review dated September nineteenth.
Are you good with that?
I, I am.
All right, the person that's seconded, are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
All right. Uh, we have two seconds. So, any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls? Motion passes. We are at item B. Case number two two seven, I'm sorry, two two dash two seven, site plan. Site plan application for three zero one nine one Michigan for the placement of marijuana micro business. Review and consideration of approval of the proposed site plan for the proposed placement of a marijuana micro business, which includes small scale growth, cultivation and retail uses in the B-three general business district at three zero one nine one Michigan Avenue. See to sale is the applicant. Go ahead, Gage.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just so we're all on the same page.
Exactly.
It is page three of, um, of. It is page three of, um, of secondment review. At the bottom of the page, it'll have a footer that says SPR twenty-two dash one seven, twenty-two dash twenty-six. Site plan consideration. Provided that there is consensus on the commission regarding this, um, project, special land use review. Um, we do recommend that the planning commission, which is the motion stated as follows. I move to approve the proposed site plan for a recreational marijuana micro business and associated parking at three zero one nine one Michigan Avenue. Provided that the special land use approval is granted by city council and contingent on the following. Uh, additional project windows are provided, uh, to a minimum of a thirty percent transparency. Or, uh, when the commission grants a waiver or reduction in such standard. Number two, perform all the questions of the landscaping section, including, um, an additional two ornamental trees in the right way. By the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the street. Two additional trees, uh, ornamental, uh, also providing irrigation system and plan, uh, for that landscaping. Is it? Great. Well, I'll make, I'll make sure what I call personally. Not a worries, the, and, and just to preface a, a list of, this list of requirements, um, can be reviewed administratively. And it will not change, uh, significantly with the design presented to. Um, so again, uh, after item two, we have item three, the perimeter fence will be painted black, coated with vinyl, uh, derived in obscure screen. Um, item four, uh, receiving a waiver from the planning commission to another twenty-nine apartment space reduction, which, um, planning department does support. Um, also that they provide a photovoltaic plant according to zoning ordinance standards. Um, provide a lighting fixture cut sheet so we can see the types of, uh, one picture that are proposed. Provide a security plan with all the required details. And including approval from the city mayor and require two hundred percent on public services, the human access and transportation. Emergency access and any other comments raised by, uh, our staff from beauty or planning.
So thank you, Gage.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, in our packet would be on page seventy-seven. Your site plan consideration. So the floor is open for a motion.
Some more, Mr. Chair, and stated by Assistant Planner, Gage.
Is there a second? Probably move that second. Is there any discussion? Here in the poll in favor?
Alright.
All polls. Motion passes. You're down to item number, I'm saying, item C. Item C, discuss twenty twenty-two marijuana ordinance updates. Review and offer feedback on topics like the green zone, where marijuana should or should not be located. By its only district within the city and methods to uplift social equity.
Alrighty, uh, I had department move here to give us a brief note on it real quick.
Yes. And so we wanted to open the conversation, just have a preliminary conversation about what direction the city council would like to. Uh, wire and or allow or not allow, not, I'm sorry, not require, allow or not allow marijuana within the city. Uh, know that this is a sensitive topic for the community. So we hope to make this conversation stay, uh, one of the continued dialogues. To open up and receive feedback by not only the planning commission, but also members of the public. On where they want to allow or not allow marijuana in the city. So the first worksheet is a proposed green zone. And I know we've, um, there've been conversations about what a green zone needs in the city. So I wanted to have a conversation and test the water and see how comfortable we are with this. And I just want to say, uh, for, for begin these worksheets. This is an informal conversation about what the planning commission wants, the commission. Um, where they would like to see or not see marijuana in the city. This is not anything to voting on today. It's just a, a general discussion. Um, so the green zone is the area between Henry Rock and Millbell. Along Michigan Avenue. And this includes all the properties in the north and southern Michigan Avenue. I think it, uh, I don't have the page number, but probably like seven from the end of the packet.
It'll be one eleven of the packet.
Okay, one eleven of the packet. So the idea is that this green zone would concentrate usage. And allow for marijuana as an automatically committed use. The green zone does not have any usage that are defined as a drug free zone. Like I described earlier, but like no libraries, no schools, no daycare centers are within this. So the idea is to allow for marijuana as an automatically committed use and not a special land use. Um, within this one designated area. And as the cleaning commission is well aware, all of the applicants that, that we saw, I mean, I think. Four of the applicants that we saw. Will apply for an adult use recreation business are within this green zone. So if we decide to limit the buffers as well as allowing it to be automatically committed use. But if we decide to also eliminate the thousand foot buffer from other marijuana establishments just in this area. Then these applicants, all those projects would be allowed to open up their business. And that also includes the micro business that we saw tonight because they are also located within the green zone. So I have a question for planning commission. One question. How appropriate is a green zone in the city of Michigan, or the city of Hester, along Michigan Avenue between Henry Rock and Millbell? Is it very appropriate? Is it appropriate? Is it neutral? Is it inappropriate or is it very inappropriate?
Commissioners, feel free to answer. Commissioner Faison.
Um, I feel like this warrants some kind of a public conversation. Um, I mean, I think that this body. Um, is, um, open to certain things and the city council leans differently. Um, and we're just a handful of people that make up this community. I think that. There are a lot of fears and reservations and perceptions and maybe some myths. Um, that need to be discussed, I think. Like, I think there should be a conversation. Um, and I think that it should be rooted in facts. And, um, we should try to dispel some myths or, um, just make sure we are uplifting. Um, a lot more factual information about the businesses and, um. Maybe draw from experts, um, from, you know, the state, um, to be able to give some insights. Um, I mean, because there is a lot of emotion that comes with this and I just don't know that. It's in our best interest to proceed without being able to have a rich dialogue with the community that's not based on. Um, a decision, um, that is like. Make or break for a business or, you know, like make or break for like a, I, I just, I just think. We are overdue to have a public conversation on this topic. I would love if we know if anyone in our circles, um, have some experts that we can draw upon that can talk about, um. The establishments, give some facts about, um, real or not, um, income opportunities for the city. What, you know, like talk about what the industry looks like in terms of sales and growth potential. Like, I just, I think that. None of the bodies that make decisions are in a position to have rich dialogue with the community. I'm sure all of the elected officials are having discussions individually with people, but that is like pressed with a deadline and there's a decision to make. And it's gonna be in my neighborhood and it's gonna change our, you know, like how people see us as a community and I just. I would love it if we could organize a facilitated conversation, um, with residents who fall everywhere on the spectrum.
Um, Tor, Commissioner Faison said, I, I know in the past, uh, when all this ran brand new. People were all willy-nilly and ready to run and do presentations to speak before cities and different public bodies, but at this point, now they all want to charge. Um, I think someone before us.
What? Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say. Um, I'm, I'm with everything you guys are saying. But the attorney, attorney, um, meet, Hamada, I'm, I'm sorry, it's June. She actually did a whole cannabis presentation and workshop for the community right in this very room. We only had, I mean, this was back in, this was like five months ago, something like that. We only had. You only had, maybe we advertised it like crazy all over our Instagram, all over our social media. We put it up. Put signs and flyers up and, and stores and all of that stuff and. I think people only come in when they're affected by it. You know, not necessarily, um, you know, if it's not right across the street from me or not in my neighborhood, you know. Or if it's a business entity that wants to, you know, participate or somebody wants to go against that. But I, I, I totally agree with you one hundred percent. We have to continue these. It can't just be, that's that one. It should be, you know. Maybe once every three months, you know, something that's on the schedule, something that's on our calendar, you know. I think the intention was, um, you know, from Mark's perspective is that, uh, Councilman Chisholm had mentioned, I'm sorry, Chair Chisholm had mentioned. About formulating a body out of this particular group as a committee. To be like a marijuana committee and then bring in a few residents and other people to kind of actually spearhead. And this is kind of saying, okay, we are the planning commission. Where do we, you know, it, it's, it's up to us, you know, really to weigh in and then start to drive it. But at the same time, having that committee with the president was saying that we needed to form, I think that's great too. And then having a standing meeting for the community talking about marijuana. I had a, a lunch with the mayor about, um, two months back and we have maybe about a hundred or so people coming in and at the library. It was, they were running, and we talked from here, one about marijuana for like thirty, forty minutes. And it was, you know, some people that's there that was just really against marijuana. They were like, listen, I'm still against it, but I totally get what you're saying. And that's what I'm saying to you. I totally agree with that. I think breaking those barriers down, talking to people, you know, whether you're for or against marijuana. In this particular instance, um, for us to look at this area as a green zone and looking at all those wonderful projects that came before it. Because all those projects, I believe, except one came before the city council was approved. But each one of them noted as a race to the finish. So it's like, which one gets done? I mean, is it gonna add value to the community overall? And when you talk about a moral standpoint. You know, I totally get it. Everybody, you know, has an opinion on their morality, you know, and, 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 and what do you say, you know, marijuana is not this or marijuana leads to that or whatever. So I totally get the facts being presented, but when you talk about business and doing business. The state of Michigan themselves are willing to come out and hold conferences and meetings and all that different stuff with us. But we have to be interested. We, we can't wait, you know, to be burning the, you know, the, the torches and coming out with the pick forks when it's somebody we don't like.
Right.
Or they don't look like us or they're not from our community, because that's a lot of the rhetoric that we're, that we're getting. If we're doing business, then we're doing business, but how is it laid out and what is the benefits for the community? Are we pushing the social equity program? That's my biggest thing out of everything that we're doing. You know, giving people opportunity, but also saying to our people, be ready. Be qualified. You know, if you don't have the money, you know, let's figure out how you get the money, you know, get yourself prepared. A lot of our people are, are so entitled that they feel like, you know, hey, Mayor, you leaving us out. Well, how am I leaving you out when I'm presenting the information? You won't even look at it. And then if you look at it, you're like, oh, I'm discouraged because, oh, that's too much, but then you won't ask for help. So it, it, it is up to us as leaders to, to start to have that conversation with people on a raw level. Especially in our community and the impact of drugs in our community, especially with marijuana. We know that we have family members and friends and family that, you know, have gotten, uh, you know, a, a petty crime for grandma marijuana. Including myself, you know, it's like, what are we, what are we doing? You know, what's, what's really the bottom line? What's the end goal? You know, for everything, you know, of course prohibition, go back to marijuana, I mean, go back to alcohol and all that different type of stuff. But look at the effect that that's really had in our community, you know, so we gotta have a balance. I'm not saying that we open up the floodgates and let marijuana come into our city and it's all everywhere, but right next door to you. You got, or down the street or around the corner in our neighborhoods, we got illegal activity with marijuana. So let's regulate it. How do we regulate it? How does that look? How does, do, does the city get taxes from that? Does the city bill other people and wealth with that within our community? You know, and then having halo effect to where you have all these other businesses. Like, I love what the micro business said today. We have, um, you know, this property right next door to it and it will be retail, not marijuana, you know. But do we hold them to the finish line? And I mean, and these guys that were sitting out here today with the, um, the, uh, the auto armored truck thing that they're doing. That's my number one priority. You know, I get it. Okay, you want that little carriage? You want to grow marijuana? Okay, that's great. But the armor truck thing for me is the, the, the bread, you know, for, for me and the community. So having those discussions and making sure that we're putting in these ordinances what we want to see happen. You have to have this plan. You should be a goal. You shouldn't be, you shouldn't, it shouldn't be a recommendation in our community, we're a social equity, equity community. You should have to have resident, not, uh, what is it called? The reinvestment into the community.
Well, then we might also want to pass a community benefits ordinance.
That's correct.
We actually had a presentation, uh, last year.
Yep.
I brought in a, someone I know, my nine-to-five wife, um, who, who's nonprofit, um, works mostly in Detroit. Um, doing that kind of work, but if we're going to be, you know, putting things into policy, we need a community benefits ordinance.
I totally agree, and I think that's probably what it gives people out, really, as we're talking to people, talking about community benefits surrounding any development in the city.
That's right.
Not just new development, but, you know, redevelopment, you know, and also all types of jobs across the, the, the board, you know. So I, I totally agree with you about one hundred percent, uh, Madam VP and, and Mr. Chair. Um, again, I think the intent from planning was to put this on us, back on us, so we can actually start talking about it. Because it's been scuttled by the, in the community, even amongst our council members, that, you know, that I was somehow like, you know. Messing with the ordinance or something. And I'm like, who is, no, you know, let's just put this out front. So now we can all talk about it. And then we go from there, but you can't make people come. People, you know, maybe we feed everybody, you know, we say we got some free food and we trick them. And it's, yeah, you got a whole bunch of free food over here, but you can get it after we do this community talk. You know, about marijuana because we know it's touching. It's really taboo, especially for, you know, people, you know, that, that grew up in the Reagan era. You know, I mean, you know, say no to drugs and all that, you know what I mean? And it's so crazy, it's a great way, it's gonna drive you, whatever it is. And then now, you know, young people are just like, hey, you know, it's just a regular thing. People are actually making careers. In marijuana that don't even smoke marijuana, because you're not even talking about the other things, uh, streams of income from marijuana. What about the IT part of it? Because the state of Michigan has a, a system that you have to know. You have to be qualified to actually run that system. What about the security from it, you know? What about packaging? What about marketing? You know, so many different halos that come off of marijuana. It's about how we as a community envision that and what we want to see happen. We gotta stop sitting back and I agree with you, VP. If we haven't had those discussions from day one, we haven't done a good job as a community. We have to, as the leaders, start to make that conversation happen. And then how people will come, each one of us should be inviting ten people to, if we decide we're gonna put something on. We should be bringing in ten, ten people and those people are saying, you know, I'm for it, I'm against it, so we can have a real conversation about it. So I know that's my soapbox, but I, I just kind of had to chime because I know that Mark was, Mayor was talking about it and that's kind of where it's led to.
Since you know the industry, do you know if hemp products are regulated the same way or is that open? Because there's so many products that you can manufacture from hemp. And I don't know the reg on that.
Kind of cra- it's kind of crazy, but, um, the country, um, back in nineteen forty-two, and don't quote me on the exact date, but, um. Henry Ford made his, made a car, made the Model T out of him. He made the, the, the car itself out of him.
Yeah.
And then he actually fueled it. And then he actually fueled it with hemp, and then he took it to England. And then the feds over here outlawed him in the entire country. So now some can, some states are saying that hemp is okay, you can actually grow hemp. How that's being regulated in the state of Michigan, I do not know.
So what is hemp processing that's regulated by the Cannabis Regulatory Agency as of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two?
There you go, see, that just happened. See, so that just, just, just happened, you know, even with that and having that information, because you talk about the cannabinoids, which are CBDs. You walking in the stores right now, Walgreens, you know.
I know, I see it all kinds of stuff.
CBD, like, well, what is that? Oh, T A C, and they got the little hemp thing going, so all of that stuff, we talk about education, people just have to be open minded to it. So the carrot is to talk about, you know, everything or a topic for everybody, you know? Or just have an open forum, so we can have a dialogue. And I'm, I'm with that, I'm, I'm willing to put myself out there and say that we can start, you know, I'll start having those community, you know, meetings and, and, and marijuana is gonna be a subject, and we'll have an expert come in from, you know, the state of Michigan, or from planning, over in Monroe, uh, in Monroe, and they're killing it right now. They have, you guys know Monroe, the city of Monroe, how big is Monroe? Anybody know?
Not that big.
What, what size is it? Anybody know? They have like eight dispensaries.
And, and I think.
Right next door to each other in Monroe. And what they're doing is they're saying, you know what, I'm gonna capitalize off Ohio. People gonna come right across the border, and you got all these people. And I'm on, not on, how many?
Ten square miles.
Ten square miles.
And I know I looked at another, I won't, when I saw what was on the agenda, I can't remember what city that was, it starts with a K. And they're a very small city, because in, in the article, it was stating that, don't get it twisted when you see the small city only has six, because they're only this big. But they have six.
Yeah.
So, you know, and they're booming, it's like, this, this, this industry is booming, and Arbor, I think, is at the top.
Oh, no doubt about that. But see, the, the, the key is for the city of Inxter, what we have to do is, yeah, we don't want it everywhere. We'll never be the marijuana, people have been saying that, you know, that it's gonna be the marijuana capital of, of the state of Michigan. No, and Arbor's that.
Yeah.
So stop, stop playing around with that. You have five hundred thousand people in the city of Inarbor for the hash mass every single year. Five hundred thousand. Am I saying that's something incorrect? If I am, please correct me. So we'll never, you know, hey, do I want five hundred thousand people in Inxter shopping and, and all these other stuff, staying in these boutique hotels that we go? I'm just saying, you know, I mean, you know. Let's start with what we have, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, you guys are, you guys love Inxter as much as I do, you know? But we have to have real conversations about Inxter and how people perceive the city of Inxter and how corporations perceive the city of Inxter, and how people that live in the city of Inxter perceive its own self. Most people that live in successful communities, they say, you know, I love my community because of this, 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 and this. We say we love Inxter, but, and that's the key, what's the but? But crime, but sun safe, but we have this, we don't have that, you know? So that's the things that we have to really start to, to change. So when I look at marijuana, I look at it as, okay, here's a legal business that the state of Michigan is regulating. Then, what is it, thirty-something now, states in the country are on on board? And you have your vice president of the United States of America saying that marijuana, they gonna figure out how to regulate that? It's like, okay, how does Inxter take that and say, okay, here's a little carrot? Let's regulate it, not all over the place, in this area, or this area, this area, then now let's feed off of it and say, you know what, I know it's big money for you. What about us in our community? I need number one, I want reinvestment into the community. So every project that came before us, they said, hey, I'm gonna put some retail space here, I'm gonna work with some local people, get my guys, you know, I love Wings a Million, I love Top Chef and all them guys, but they on corners. Why can't I get them in the new buildings, right next door to dispensaries or whatever, you know, Love Fab and the, they shop and they got stuff going on, why they not on Michigan Avenue? I mean, really, at the end of the day, it's.
Not to cut you off.
I'm sorry.
Back to the worksheet.
Go ahead. You don't have any money, you know, they don't have any money, they don't have no opportunities, but I'm just saying, you know? Go ahead, Mr. Chair, I apologize.
No problem. Um, just, okay, so basically, in a sense, this discussion is coming before us, and you all talked about, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Faison brought up, and Mayor Wimbley, um, joined her, or concurred with that about having this discussion at a wider level than just us. Mara or Planning Department, so far with this worksheet, I believe I saw something about returning this? Or did I? I thought I saw something about in the email when it came out about filling it out and returning it.
Yeah, and, um, being prepared to discuss today, just general feedback, but whatever.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chair? Why don't we do a Survey Monkey for the whole community, based off of this?
As long as, um.
And then, I mean, you know, work, do our robo-call thing when we get ready to do our community meeting, you know?
And that should work, I know, I can't remember what the numbers were before, but now that we've pushed more towards technology, when everything went virtual and remote, if you will, um, I think a little bit more people are, uh, able to access. Because when we did one before, and this was back when Jenny Fields was here, we didn't have the numbers that we expected. So, and that's when things like the master plan and stuff were changing, and then we had the, if you will, the big town hall discussions. I think one was here, and one was at the rec center and stuff like that, because what we always get too, when we get ready to huddle, is everybody say they're not able to get there. Or why is it north of Michigan Avenue, why don't you have something south of it? Why don't you have something in the senior buildings for the seniors? So it's, it's always gonna be a slight downside or underserved populace, but I think in this day and age, what you said with Survey Monkey, we'll get higher numbers, hopefully, uh, for participation and compile some more data.
Zoom, put it out there, I mean, COVID silver lining, people are all on these devices. I mean, you got people online right now looking at this meeting, you know? So I think we use everything that, that, that we can.
I'm, um, I'm sorry, well, first, I know, when we opened this up, I want to Commissioner Faison comment on it. Mayor Wimbley commented, anybody else want to comment, questions or comments about this worksheet or this topic of discussion right now?
Well, you're, I'm sorry, green belt area that's exclusively for marijuana, right? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Uh, so we would allow other retail uses, um, but there would be an overlay in the zoning ordinance that would allow for marijuana uses as an automatically permitted use. Right now, as you, as you saw, these marijuana applicants are coming for a committee commission or council because marijuana is a special ban, it means that they need to have a special land use permit in order to use this more intense use, or to open up this more like intensive use of business, okay? So we're saying with this green zone, that just in this targeted area between Henry Rough and Middle Belt, which is the avenue, marijuana uses, whatever one we decide, because there's different ones, uh, would be able to be for, um, odd, allowed to open without a special land use permit. And the separation buffers would be removed. But that is the, that is, this is open to conversation. Nothing set in stone and everything can be added.
So, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
So I would be correct in saying that there is no land in the city of Inxter that is zoned for marijuana. And that's why, okay. All right, very good. I, I, I just, and then when we do, they, they can be other places, but they would always have to go through special land use to do other places.
And they would have that buffer, and that, and they would have that buffer in the other places. But, and this is what I'm understanding, the three hundred and a thousand dollar buffer in the other places in the city. But this, because this is my, I'm stating my question now, because this is how I'm understanding it. So when we talk about this green zone, we're saying that between Henry Rough and Middle Belt, there will be no buffers or no, um, um, what's the other one? In other word, buffers and, okay, I guess both of my buffers, what's three hundred feet is?
Buffer.
Okay, and a thousand feet is? Okay, so there will be no buffers, period, when we talk about the green, the green zone between Henry Rough and, uh, Middle Belt. There are no buffers, they can just be right next door to each other.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, how deep does that go for Michigan to?
That was my next question, so are we talking, what's the cross, the Middle Belt and Henry Rough, and what's the, um? So, so just a long Michigan avenue between, uh, Annapolis and, um.
Physically.
Your address has to be on Michigan Avenue, that's it.
That's what I'm saying, though, so it has to be on Michigan Avenue, right?
But it's not going back to.
Also, it's not going that way, got you, so that would be Dudley, what is that then? So that would be?
No, like you.
Okay, I get it. I see it now, I see it now, so we're talking about Michigan, Henry Rough, Middle, so that's very small.
Yeah.
So we're talking very small, so that's not a big, I mean, I shouldn't say that.
Would we be more in favor of treating it specifically for that location? Is it that we're trying to favor that area over other areas?
I think the intent of the zoning ordinance to rewrite as it relates marijuana is to regulate marijuana where the city wants to have it and where we don't want to have it. So the intent of these worksheets is to understand where we want to concentrate these uses and where we don't want these uses at all.
So when you say that, you say, this is the intent, I understand that part, so. But the, that same intent is still in those other places where the buffers are at too, though, right? So when you say that, it make it sound like the regulations is not in the other areas. That's not what you're saying, right? Because it's still regular.
Ready?
Okay, worksheet two actually addresses that theory, so worksheet two is where do we want or not want marijuana? So what I'm talking about today, right now, um, is three different pages of, three different, uh, discussion topics that we can decide on or collaborate on to update the marijuana ordinance in the city of Inxter. The goal for Planning Department is to update the marijuana ordinance. Um, and then, I don't know if I mentioned this, but there are two different ordinances that regulate marijuana in the city of Inxter. Do you guys know what these two different ordinances are? There's zoning ordinance that you guys oversee, so that's one, and then there's the business licensing chapter, chapter.
Which is the city clerk, correct?
Yeah, one twenty-four with the city clerk. So these are two areas, ordinances that oversee marijuana within the city of Inxter. The staff, planning department staff, is rewriting these ordinances, but we need feedback from the community to understand how to rewrite them. So the discussion topics are, number one, do we want a green zone? Number two, where do we want to see marijuana and where do we not want to see it as it relates to districts within the zoning ordinance? So zoning districts, and then that's the worksheet two. And then three is what types of marijuana applicants do we want to have within the city of Inxter? And that's where this really cool, I think, social equity program comes in, where applicants have to be out of one of the four categories, that's worksheet three. I don't know if you want me to talk in more detail about that, Chair, but I'll leave that.
On the social equity, what types of marijuana applicants to be allowed? Guys want to talk about that now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm really excited about this, I've talked to a couple colleagues who also think this is a, a pretty clever situation or, uh, policy for us to implement as it relates to social equity in marijuana in the city of Inxter. So I understand that we want a community benefit, we want social equity, this is a conversation we've had for many years now. So in order to do this and have it as easy as possible for the city to regulate and implement, we've come up with, planning teams come up with, that the applicant, whoever applies to open up a marijuana business within the city of Inxter, has to fall under one of the four categories, listed on worksheet three. So one, the applicant could be within one of the hundred eighty-four Michigan communities, and that's a hyperlink that the state rec, uh, has recognized, they've recognized a hundred eighty-four Michigan communities. The city of Inxter is one of them, that have been disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition and enforcement. So for at least five years, so they have to be a resident of one of these a hundred eighty-four communities. And I'll just put a pin in that really quickly, if you don't mind. The way we got this idea for this policy was by reviewing what the city of Detroit has been talking about from their own social equity policy as relates to marijuana businesses. And the city of Detroit wanted to have a clause where they only allow in certain areas locals to apply for marijuana businesses. But unfortunately, that was shut down in court, saying it was unconstitutional to discriminate and just allow locals to apply. So the way that the city of Detroit is making their social equity say, okay, well then we're gonna allow one, um, the applicant to live for five years if they are part of one of these a hundred eighty-four communities that have been negatively impacted. Okay, so that's one bucket that the applicant could follow. For the second bucket, is the applicant could provide evidence of a marijuana conviction, misdemeanor felony of a, of a marijuana related offense. So those are two categories that the applicant could follow under. The third one is they have to be registered as a primary caregiver under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act for at least two years between the time that the, the caregivers were op, or, um, operating. So those three buckets all apply to a social equity policy. Those, that's the social equity policy, where we would be giving back and prioritizing these types of applicants in our community. The fourth bucket is with, I'm gonna just be frank, catches us from a lawsuit, but also allows for inclusivity within our, our planning processes. So the fourth bucket is a catch-all, everyone's included, everyone can follow under this. If you don't, if you're not a participant in any of the first three, then the project applicant must be a gold level participant of the Cannabis Regulatory Agency Social Equity All-Star Program, which we mentioned earlier today, if you guys remember. And that means that they have to provide not only all of their plans to the state of Michigan, but also to the city of Inxter, to publish online, which we already required today, earlier. So the, what it means to be a gold level participant, because earlier I mentioned that they're the bronze, silver, and gold level, what it means to be a gold level participant is not only they do their social equity grant, which is bronze, they also have to do the silver level, which is the corporate spend plans. And then the bronze level is that they have to have some type of community reinvestment, which is either they can volunteer their time to reinvest in the community, so a nonprofit of the Inxter, or they can give monetary contribution. Those are the four buckets that an applicant through business related to marijuana in Inxter would have to follow under if we were to pass this section update to chapter one twenty-four of the city clerk's, uh, business licensing report.
Any questions, guys?
Is there, is, is there, you said they would have to give a monetary donation? Is, is there a stated amount that they would have to give?
I don't have a stated amount, but if you, that, that'd be something that this committee could research.
And that goes to nonprofits in the community and not necessarily back to the general fund of the city, right?
Right, they couldn't.
They're not allowed to donate directly to the city, are they?
Well, sadly, that'd be some of the more so followed under that community reinvestment initiative they spoke of tonight. Just, you know, streamlined a bit, a little bit more cleaner, and just, um, because I know somebody said that before, was asking, can't they do that? But I think it really has to be straightened out correctly, so it don't like it's just pay play. Like, oh, I made this donation to this community, then I get to come open up and do whatever I want to do. There you go.
I just want to clarify too, these are your questions, all of this policy is actually online, and it's the Cannabis Regulatory Agency policy. So it is, we're, we're the Social Equity All-Star Program. So it is, we're, we're the Social Equity All-Star Program that the state of Michigan is implementing, and they're getting more and more, I've been on various conversations with, or on various phone calls with CRA, Canvas Reciprocate Agency, and they're getting more and more momentum in implementing this program. You can also see an example, um, these are hyperlinks. So here, attending on your laptop or iPad, uh, you can see an example of other businesses that have why they're, um, they're also our program plans. So there's four online for the gold qualifiers, and there's twenty-three already for the bronze.
Yeah, I think of, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bradford, Case Bradford.
Yes.
You had something right when Mara was starting.
I'm sorry?
You had a comment or a question right when Mara was starting?
I did. Not right from my mind. Oh, I was trying to, I know, I know that these are, I guess we kind of work hand in glove in certain areas. But I, I guess I'm trying to figure out different ways that this body is able to help in building funds so much, so our things like our swimming pool, we could get stuff like that going. You know, I don't know, those are passions of mine that I would like to see happening.
And if I could say, I guess that would be part of that, that plan. So a, a, a business could say, you know, we're going to get the, the pool done. We couldn't say, well, you have to give us so much money to get the pool done. But they can say that we're going to commit to help to, you know, revitalize the pool at the recreation complex, you know, that's our project, or park, or.
So it would be similar to like a, a dock.
Yeah.
A dock.
But it's like they would put their money in, or from what Mara was saying, they could put their time in through, you know, and it would just be what that equivalent is.
But we have to have a separation between the decision-making body and like, I mean, I would assume that they can't directly invest into a city budget or a city fund.
Right.
Because the, you know, because then it looks like you are paying for votes.
Right, so, so it, it's kind of murky and gray, you know? Because all of us, and I understand this, the hundred and eighty-four communities, and believe me, I've talked to plenty of mirrors across the spectrum as it relates to how do you get, you know, monies from, you know, these folks, they're making so much money, but then they're taking it out of our community. And folks are doing just that through this program. They're saying, you know, hey, we have a city park. We want you to come in and invest it. And they'll invest directly to that, you know, so they wouldn't necessarily, like for instance, with us with the county. Um, you know, I told, um, Warren Evans, hey man, I don't have any money for reimbursement for a grant. And he was like, okay, well, we'll take on the project, where we'll oversee it and we'll pay directly to the contractors and all that. So that's kind of how I think that we can feed into this, if that makes sense. You know, saying that with this social equity pro- or equity program, you can identify stuff that we want to have done within the community. And, you know, the people that participate in all it, you know, that's what it is. But they would have to do that on their own. It's nothing that we could coerce.
Yeah, I just want to protect our officials. That's all.
No doubt about that.
If you, if, if, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I guess what I was thinking is, is like, and to answer your thing is maybe that's part of what we just need to put our heads together on, because just to keep, figure out, figure out what it is that everybody else is doing, probably, that we can keep our hands clean when we come out of it.
And I think that's going to go back to, um, the nonprofit portion of it, like Friends of Parks and Recreation. That could be a nonprofit organization that could handle the funding that would be necessary to do the, the pool.
Yeah.
Or, uh, landscaping on Michigan Avenue, uh, Friends of Michigan Avenue. I, I, I think that the, the nonprofit organizations in our community have to play a bigger part in that particular aspect of it. But I do believe programs like Adopt, Adopt a Park, or Adopters, or that, that, those are still all nonprofit programs that can be, uh, implemented into obtaining those type of, uh, funding. And I'm, I'm sure if we spoke to other municipalities, this is how those items are occurring now. Because even, even when you know, but even when you're dealing with in school systems and things like that, it's a public benefit. But you can have organizations like the sor- sororities and fraternities do a lot of things in, in their individual communities that, that, that they're, uh, they're, um, they're established in, like Inkster has, AKA Inkster has, uh, Deltas. You know, so, uh, top ladies of distinction. I mean, there's a lot of nonprofit organizations that those, that that type of situation can be addressed to without it looking like it, it's being paid, paid in play. But I think that's where the reinvestment portion of it, it ha- there has to be, there has, there's, there's some type of precedent. I think now is the time to just establish what is the precedent and what will be best suited for our community. I mean, even church organizations have to. Church organizations can also adopt things and, and they're close to their, um, to their facilities as well. So I, I think it's just a matter of determining what is going to be best suited for our community. And kind of seek that knowledge from other municipalities who are establishing our head. I'm sure Ann Arbor has a whole list of how they are getting the, that, that community, uh, reinvestment going. I, and I, and if Country Monroe can do it, I'm sure Little Ex can too. That's right. I think that, that we need to reach out to the communities that are already functioning and, and, and find out what's going to best suit for our community directly.
Mr. Chair, can I ask the, just some clarifying questions to the planner?
Yes.
Um, I guess I'm really curious, like, what happens to the race to the finish? You know, if you were to implement this, like, what happens to that? Like, how much do we eliminate of some of the issues that we might see with this race, race to the finish? Um, does, would, would this eliminate some challenges we can foresee in the future with regard to applicants that we've, um, had already? And, um, would it mean that we would make it so that you can only open these establishments in this particular district, or would we also still have? Um, well, I guess that's part of your question, is like, do you only want to have it in one place? Or do you want to restrict it, but not, maybe it's like you're, you're trying to feel out whether people want one or the other or some combination of the two? Um, and then the, the last question is, um, you know, if you have, based on what you know about, because there have been so many applications and that, and, and so many things that we've had to try to navigate and maneuver with this race to the finish situation. Um, can you foresee that we really need to complete this process by a particular point and start planning backwards? Like, is there a, a, a point in time where we think we're likely to, like, see some issues with regard to if this one finishes right when this one finishes and they hit that buffer and we haven't passed our, our new ordinance and, you know, there, they can claim that, there are so many scenarios that could happen with that race to the finish that, like, does this help mitigate some of that?
Okay, um, great questions. These are all topics of the hour. The proposed policy to add a green zone buffer will remove any, or I mean, or they should remove any legal obstacles that the race to the finish concept is, um, experiencing. And the answer for timeline is we need to do this now. Um, we hosted a final site plan review meeting, and it is only a matter of, what I would say, of beliefs for some people to be requesting, uh, a meeting with, with, um, Director Don Jones from Building Department to receive their certificate of occupancy. And we all know that when we receive our certificate of occupancy, that means that they are able to receive their business license, and they are a lawfully existing business after that. So we need to do this now, um, and the second question, so I might answer the first and the third. Uh, I don't know if it's.
Uh, yeah, I think you covered it. Um, so now is not an answer. We need to put a date on it. Are you suggesting that, like, at the very next meeting that we are ready to pass something? Like, we should put some dates on this and then work backwards.
I'm going to bring that back to you then, Commissioner. What dates would you like to see? You, why, like, if you'd like to help guide the planning department, please.
Mr. Chair, can I please ask a question to the right? So you said three weeks. How's that possible? How's that possible, three weeks?
Chair.
Go ahead.
Some marijuana applicants, as you're familiar with, are undergoing a reoccupancy. And that means that they do not, they're not requiring, or they're, they're not undergoing any new construction. So reoccupancy is defined as reoccupying an existing building. So they're just doing some basic improvements for the health, safety, welfare, the interior improvements, maybe some facade changes that the planning commission recommended, or landscaping that the planning commission required. Then they would be ready to see Director Don Jones.
Within the next three weeks.
Yes.
When are you guys having the final site plan? I know you've been meeting with all of them together in a cluster. So when is the next one? You said you're having a meeting with them?
We have no further meetings with the applicants. We only correspond one-on-one individually when we see that their site plan has met all of the conditions required by planning commission and city council, and we do that in a one-on-one setting.
Okay. Okay. That's three weeks. I know that's kind of fast. Just looking at the conditions of even one of the builders, they could possibly be ready in three weeks, but, you know, I'm just thinking literally, three weeks. Probably a little bit longer than that. But still, I'm with you, you saying that we need to do something.
And the significance of the three weeks is that that then triggers other things?
Uh, so the significance of the three weeks establishment is that these, the business, whoever, it's the race to the finish, so whoever applies for their certificate of occupancy, passes building department inspections, then it moves forward and sends a petition for a business license application, the city clerk receives your business license application. They set the buffer, they set that thousand-foot buffer.
Yeah.
Or multiple applicants.
Yes.
Oh, so much fun.
So.
Hmm.
So you just said that thousand-foot buffer. But if we decide to go with having it in the green zone, that does not play a part anymore. Well, it still does.
Okay, Chair.
Right.
Uh, the proposed green zone, as you see on worksheet one, and it's proposed, so we can amend the language however you decide. But the proposed green zone would eliminate all separation buffer requirements. And we're also toy with the idea that businesses would be able to open up as an automatic permitted use and not require a special land use permit.
But they would still have to come through planning? They still would have to come through planning, right?
They would have to come through planning for, actually, no, they wouldn't. They would be able to reoccupy a building, so if it was an existing building, they would be able to reoccupy it, and that's happened administratively. But if they want to perform, uh, more construction, in any construction anyway, yes, they would have to submit a site plan to the planning department, planning commission. No, I mean, site plans are also approved administratively depending on the, if, if the construction is minor or major. So.
The green zone I'm with, the special use or not. I mean, permitting use or not. I think we talked about that already. I'm just putting it on the record for everybody, for me.
And I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I keep hearing you say two different things with this buffer thing, because I thought I kind of had this at least that part of it with the thousand-foot buffer and three hundred-foot buffer. I thought I had that pretty well in my head, and that would, that's what made me comfortable when, when we say unlimited, you know, you, you know, uh, facilities, marijuana facilities. The green zone will not have those buffers if we decide to do that.
No, if we're not, if you decide to write a green zone.
If we decide to do the green zone, does that eliminate the other ones that would require the buffers that are outside? So we're saying we can only have marijuana facilities in the green zones. There are no other marijuana facility, facility nowhere else. Is that what we're saying? If we decide to do the green zone, go with the green zone.
Okay, so this is a great question. Thanks for clarifying.
Yes.
This is, uh, up to us to discuss and decide. So we could just allow marijuana businesses right within that little green zone. Or we could allow them, that's why I paid the worksheet on page two, or worksheet two, uh, lists out all the different zoning districts within the city of Inkster, and we can write where we want to see marijuana or we don't want to see marijuana.
I looked at the worksheet and it's still the same question. Because we still have to be clear on what we're actually saying. And I don't know if it's, if I'm not, are you guys, do, am I making sense to anybody or am I?
Well, I think, I think all of it is up for discussion.
Okay.
I think it's, I mean, I think there, like, Mara has presented, sorry. I, I can't even pronounce your last name. I'm so sorry. Well, our planner has presented, like, a way to think about it.
Right.
But I think we basically have to decide what's, what it's going to look like. So, you know, you're asking clarifying questions about how it's, like, the conceptually being presented, but all the details we still have to work out.
Okay. My question was, ah, come back to you, senior.
So if one person, it's their business license, we still do this green zone happen?
I would say so.
Okay.
That's a good question. That's a very good question, because now we don't feel so.
Rushed.
Yes. Well, we still, we still need to hurry.
I mean, absolutely, but it just still makes you feel a little bit, like you can breathe a little bit, because otherwise we're saying, hey, in three weeks, we got to do this because, but he's saying, but he's saying that if, if, if one person gets it, we still can allow for that. So.
I saw your question was, can we still change the law and be okay? Yes, we can still change the law, but is there a trigger that is about to happen in a few weeks that will affect other people, other businesses?
Oh, we're not opening, okay.
That's about to happen. The, the buffer, right? Am I, am I, did I misspeak?
I, I was just going to say that we would want the city attorney to weigh in and see if, uh, a law that we enact in the future would allow for the past projects to, uh, to bind back that law.
For grandfathers.
And that's what I was getting ready to go, uh, that's my question.
It'll be grandfathered in.
Yeah, that's, that's my question. And so from a legal perspective, would that be a grand, would, would that situation be grandfathered clause and not pertaining? Now, let's just for, for a minute, I think, Rebecca, I understand where you're trying to go. So let me see if I can break it down, break it, break it full circle.
Let's forget about the green zone for a minute. What, the entities that are currently outside of the proposed green zone, how would they be affected by the green zone?
That's exactly the question. Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, if, if, if this green zone got implemented, businesses that exist outside of that green zone would, that, if, if you're only allowing marijuana within that certain land, I'm sure. Those marijuana businesses that already exist would be considered legally non-conforming. Um, because they existed lawfully before the ordinance passed, before our regulations, before the.
Hmm.
Um, if they were to make further improvements to their site, um,
Yes.
You know, it, yeah, gosh, it's, it's complicated, but they would be allowed to exist.
Okay, so, so, and, so, so in the sense that we're gonna, in layman's term, they're gonna operate under grandfather clause.
You can dip, that's, that's the way they.
But they will, but we will have no more outside of the green zone.
Yeah, if, if that's how we write that.
That's how you can say it. That's what, then, that's what we should intend to do.
Exactly.
I would.
Okay, so that's, okay, now, now, yeah.
In that way, you put a stop to whatever else outside the green zone.
Got you.
Nothing else exists. And that way you put a stop to whatever else outside the green zone, nothing else exists.
I do want to bring up a point though, if we do just limit marijuana businesses to be within that one area, then that means we limit ourselves to not having as many participants as we are able in our social equity plan. That's something to consider as well.
So. But, and, 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 and so this is added to what I was trying to say. But, if they're outside of the green zone, the buffers are still helping us to limit so many from being in the cities. At any point, any given point, the buffers is really our, our protection or our, our.
It's the buffer.
Our shield. From allowing this to be like, oh my god, these are just everywhere. No, they can't be everywhere because we got these many churches, we got these many schools, we got these many residential areas. So there's only so many that can go there anyway. So we're gonna have both, we're gonna have, I'm not saying that this is what we're gonna have, I'm just talking out loud. If we're moving forward and keeping with what we have already, we would have the buffers that would be our shield for any applicants coming in to add the social equity piece along with them. And, and the buffers to, to, to keep with the limiting of how many marijuana facilities are there. But then on, if you're in the green zone um, area, there are no buffers. And we can have as many as we want, they're not, and, and, and and we're still asking for those social equity pieces and all of that stuff down there. So that way, we still have.
Yeah, okay.
I wanted to be clear, did you say that when, when they were in that green zone, that they would not be basically regulated by this planning board anymore?
Oh, they still will be regulated. Oh, wait a minute, I think he did say that.
If, if they're principally.
Because, um.
If they're permitted use, but I'm, I, I don't agree with. You still keep special land use on that, just because it is what it is, it's such a touchy subject. You want to have the applicants come and stand before us and still go before the council.
Can we do that? Oh, so this is what this is about?
We're talking about it, we, yeah, if we wanna say a permitted use would just allow them to be there. Like a barber shop is permitted in this area, so they just administratively, they not doing any new construction, they can just open. And the council asks you, that dispensary just opened, how did they even get there? Your constituents just asked, how did they even get there? They should still. Believe me, I, I would love no more than just to have permitted use, because again, the headache that comes along with the bureaucracy. But I understand because it's such a touchy su- subject, sensitive subject, you still wanna have public hearings. Still want people to be able to come out, have that opportunity to voice support or not support, so that's just my thought.
So are we able to make a motion to make this decision tonight?
Can you say this is just an informal conversation tonight?
Yes.
Do you want to address this question? Okay, all right, well, this is worksheet, so we're, we're receiving your feedback, and I mean, when we said like, how appropriate is this, you can all say, how appropriate is allowing marijuana businesses within the green zone to be a special land use? How appropriate is allowing marijuana businesses within the green zone to be an automatically permitted use? And that would we could, uh, put that into the next round.
Mr. Chair. So. Let, let, I, I guess I need a little bit of clarification on what you just said regarding. So, break down, let's, now, let's concentrate in the gr- the greens on the left. And I totally agree with, with marijuana really is saying. So would a permitted use mean that if, okay, whatever the business is, is marijuana, that's being regulated by the state, blah, 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 whatever. If there is a green zone, the Michigan Avenue corridor, Middle Belt, Henry Ruff, or whatever. And are we proposing, or is it, is it recommend, that, uh, recommendation is that if we do this green zone, that the that greens on with a permitted use? So does the perma- permitted use does, does not require a entity that's in the zone to have to come to somebody? Uh, I guess that's my question. Am I understanding you're correct, correctly stating that if we create this green zone and allow it to be a permitted use, they don't have to come up to nobody? I mean, that's what he said, yeah, well, that's, I'm, yeah, so I, I do need clarification on that.
All right, uh, so they would still have to buy by all state requirements, so marijuana is used particularly by the state of Michigan. So they would have to follow through with all the licensing for retail, which are, I mean, at least two different stages, if in the state of Michigan, you have to apply the, a first phase um, application, and then the final phase when they actually come and perform an inspection. To make sure that the business is looking up to all the health, safety, welfare, that would be my key. So we would have to buy by everything from the state, they just would not be attending a public meeting, creating a site plan. Um, and attending two public meetings, um, having a public hearing, having a notice in the paper, emailing or sending letters to everyone within their feet, including a site plan, and the reason I'm pointing is all things out is because perhaps this is where the city wants to see these use things, and it might make sense that they want that applicant to uh, focus their, their resources on volunteer time in the payback time, the nonprofit, if they are, um, category four. Uh, and one other point after that, but I lost it, so.
But there would still be an administrative review, like, they'd still have to come to the planner.
Yeah, so we engage with reoccupancies, uh, or, I mean, it would have to be reoccupancies, so. If there is an existing building on Michigan Avenue, and someone wanted to come and open up their marijuana business there, the planning department would review, make sure zoning's okay, make sure parking's okay, and then approve or deny that reoccupancy, send it to the building department, then the building department would perform their inspections. Uh, or issue any work permits as needed, that's a basic, um, process within any city when we open up new businesses. Thing that doesn't make sense when new businesses open up is that they have to, we've been requiring site plans. So a special land use request through the state of Michigan requires a site plan. And so some of these projects that you saw were existing buildings, and uh, that means the applicant is forced to create a site plan for an existing building that's already laid out structure that would, if any setbacks, be not legal non-conforming. Uh, but then the planning commission has oversight to say, like, add landscaping, improve the facade, add transparency, so. There's, there's a given, there, there's two sides of the equation, which is, it's good that planning commission has the oversight to go and to regulate the facade of the project, but then also, it also does take up a lot of time, resources for the, the project itself. Just showing you the two sides, especially in use and amen.
So, but even if you have to do all of those things you just said, because the, a special land use requires a site plan, we have to go through the two hearings and all of this stuff. Even with all of those things that have to be done with that, we're only talking about between Henry Ruff and Middle. Right? So how many, so how many businesses can actually fit in between? So that wouldn't be that many times that they would, that we wouldn't be getting that many applicants, because it's only so many applicants that can fit between Henry Ruff and Middle, though. Am I stating that right?
Yes, and I also like to point out, a lot of those buildings are already taken.
Exactly, so. And that's my next question, so what if you in this green zone and this is new construction, then what happens?
They gotta go through planning, they gotta come to the planning commission anyway if it's permitted use, if it's new construction. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm just talking.
No, no, it's okay, but no, because that's my question, so if it's, if, so, we're, if you have the greens on, it's per- automatic permitted use, they are to, but if it's new construction, they still have to come through the same process anyway, correct?
Depending on the level of new construction, if it's a complete new build, then yes, that's a huge amount of construction, whether it's a minor, um, I will be an example. If, in addition, in addition to an existing building, then that can, that is addressed minister.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, may I make a, I make a recommendation? I feel like we, um, are talking about a lot of scenarios that can all be written differently in the laws. I wonder if for homework, we should do, um, we should fill out these, um, worksheets and either fill them out or provide feedback about where, where our individual comfort level lies with, um, whether or not something is permitted, not permitted, or special land use in a particular district and/or zone, um, the way it's kind of laid out. Um, because I think that if we were to, it might help us to compare how much we align or don't align in order for us to get further along with the writing of the ordinance.
Check for a minute, um, the meeting was only scheduled for three hours to be recorded and streamed, although we only have fifteen minutes left.
We've been here three hours?
Six thirty-six, I couldn't, the meeting was called work.
Are these all different kinds, we can approve and not approve?
I'm sorry, to the.
Are these like all different kinds?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So all of the, that's a question, thank you, all the marijuana businesses, like, use that, that column under sheet two, first column. All of these, I, I, like I told you, it's on the phone in the state of Michigan, so I'm trying over here, guys. So all of these are, all of the uses related to marijuana at the state of Michigan, revenue advance. These are all marijuana uses and all these categories, it's tied up right here, these are all pieces. Comprehensive list of uses.
Can we get the worksheets, um, separate, like in a separate attachment? Because I, I'm not, I mean, unless you want us to try to manipulate this really big packet and send it back, it might be easier for those that, uh, choose to complete it, uh, if we get it separate.
And then we can type in it?
Yeah, you should, if you have, um, the version of Adobe.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I just want to make sure, I know I can't, I just want to make sure that it's easy for everybody to be able to.
Right, that's, that's a good clarification. You want to give us a deadline?
The next planning commission meeting?
Okay, do you need the worksheets for the next meeting? Like, had, had you, had you wanted to start working on this for the next meeting? Or maybe we, maybe you'll put it back on me and say, well, what do you want to do, and I'll say, well, we probably should.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say yes, because then this email, when the packet came out, it did say, please complete these prior to the meeting.
If you only gave us four days. I think we got it like.
Came out on the nineteenth of September.
The nineteen, it sounded like it was like four or five, it was pretty, it was pretty good.
So just say two week, just say two weeks from now.
Everybody having to submit.
Turning your homework, guys.
One of your students now.
Two weeks of turning your homework, you heard the teacher, professor, the professor.
All right, um, let's go ahead and I guess move forward, I think we've talked about this a lot right now, and, um, we still have some further discussion, uh, that needs to be had, and just look over those worksheets, fill them out as best you can. So, of course, it's not mandatory that you fill it out to the team, but as best you can. And then get those back, whether you scan it or drop it off to a person, uh, to the planning department, and we can go from there. Um, is there anything further that we need to discuss on this matter that's of urgent nature right now? All right, here, now we're moving down to miscellaneous, planning commission application schedule, receive and file. Um, after found out, or elaborate on that for me, please.
Yes, this is an incredible document that my colleague made, Gage, thank you for making this. Um, it's, it's the last page of your packet, so it, it's a schedule for all planning commission meetings, application notice deadlines. It's a way for planning department, planning commission to be organized and transparent about all the deadlines. So everyone knows that we're not treating anyone differently, this is just when we need, when we need the, the project information. And, um, I'm gonna bring it back to your question, Vice Chair, based on. So if we want, uh, to keep up the marijuana ordinance update, we need a, we need a public hearing because it's amendments and zoning ordinance. We're looking at November twenty-eighth, if we want to have a public hearing, or, at our planning commission on November twenty-eighth, we see that we need, you know, the information by October tenth. We need, um, any revisions, you know, like, that will happen by November se- second. And we publish the public hearing notice by November fourth. And that just shows you a little bit about our deadline and schedule that we have, that's just, it is what it is. Um, and then we distribute the packet secretary, or we can advance on November twenty. That's for a November deadline, that might be a little tight. So, a December twelfth meeting, we have, as you can see, all of the following deadlines. But we have to consider city councils meeting too, because they have final say. And then you also have to consider the moratorium, um, and how moratorium might.
Oh.
Yeah.
This is a great document, um, it gives them in-depth insight, especially as new commissioners come aboard, and what happens is general public start asking questions or business owners. When they approach you about why isn't the planning department doing X, Y, and Z, well, we don't govern the planning department, you know, um, but we work with them and alongside them, and things of that nature, and it just helps, uh, because we up here might know already, or sometimes even we get mixed up with it, and you can't always pick up the phone and call Mara or Gage right in moments, no, so you got something to refer back to. Something hard copy, because even when you talk to those business owners or applicants, I should say, they don't always believe what's coming out of your mouth. And so you have a, a document to present them, so thi- this is great, um, and it just kind of keeps us, you know, erring on the side of caution, so thank you for this, uh, because I know, oh, yeah, you need whatever, three weeks out for, for a public hearing, blah, 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 but these other dates in there of what is taking your department to hit those marks, um, this helps us all out, so thank you for that, and, um, yeah, any questions, comments, commissioners? I was gonna ask about that too, good.
So are we aiming for a November twenty-eighth public hearing?
I think so.
We're not.
Public here for what?
Right, for the, for the ordinance.
Are we aiming for a November twenty-eighth public hearing for the ordinance?
Would it give you more time to prepare if we, if we talked about it and figured it out now? I mean, I, I just remember our planner saying, the time is now, so why delay?
Okay, if you, if you feel comfortable, it's, um, but, well, if you feel comfortable, we can set that.
Do you feel comfortable?
Yeah, uh, November twenty eighth for a public hearing, if you're a draft of marijuana.
Okay.
A draft is a good place to start. Come back for a special meeting.
Or a draft, and then uh we propose a draft, we receive any feedback from the public during the public meeting on the twenty eighth. We receive any feedback, any other conditions that we want to add or any changes, and then we present that final draft to the city council and immediately separate. I can see that happening.
You comfort, so you're, you're good with that?
Yes.
No pressure.
See, you want to say it now.
I should also say in the miscellaneous news that we are also um just authorized to write a park recreation plan update. So that is a, a law that the planning department is undertaking.
And we need to think about our master plan update.
That is.
It's coming.
And not just the master plan, the zoning ordinance needs to be rewritten.
Entire.
We gotta find the money for it.
Hopefully from the state.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll stop.
I was like, we got six minutes.
I'm sorry.
All right, um, anything further about the application schedule? All right, here now, we're moving down to item number nine, the second hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing. We have one member in the audience. Would you like to approach and speak about anything that's not on our agenda? Oh, there's a lot of education, thanks. It's like lecture halls. All right, well, thank you for being here. Um, well. If you guys have nothing else, we're down to item number ten. The floor is open for motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved in second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed? This meeting is now adjourned. The time is nine twenty-five P M. You all have a great night, get some rest, and get cranky for in the morning. They came in like Tazmeh. That was today. I said, oh, no, no, no.
Right.
Thanks, Mara, Gage. Good job.
We like, we like the Lions. We be moving fast in the beginning.